Thank you very much. Are there any other items? Counselor Roy de Clemente, go ahead, please.
I'm not sure if Counselor Foster is going to give us a roundup, but I wanted to congratulate him on having run a fantastic Coldest Night of the Year walk and raising a substantial amount of money for Blue Door. So I wanted to congratulate him.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a few. The Mount Albert United Church tonight is holding a Pancake Supper, so everyone's welcome to come to the church on Alice Street between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m. and get your fill of pancakes. And along with that pancake theme, the Lions Club is having their Maple Syrup Fest, so you can have some good Canadian maple syrup on March 22nd and set the Lions Club on Mount Albert Road from 9:00 a.m. to noon. And while not necessarily a community announcement, it, I thought it needed remembering today. On this day, back in March 4th, 1994, we lost a Queensville resident, a good East Gwinnebury resident, John Candy, passed away. And so I thought that should be remembered. Anyway, that's it for me, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Leahy, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much through you, Madam Mayor. Counselor Crohn stole my pancake thunder, but he neglected to, there's an additional pancake event happening again tonight, so you can go to both Mount Albert United Church, and you can also attend the Pancake Supper at the Christ Church in Holland Landing between 5:30 and 7:00 p.m. tonight. So we don't want to miss out on those pancakes. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Are there any other items? Counselor Roy de Clemente, go ahead, please.
I'm not sure if Counselor Foster is going to give us a roundup, but I wanted to congratulate him on having run a fantastic Coldest Night of the Year walk and raising a substantial amount of money for Blue Door. So I wanted to congratulate him.
Counselor Foster, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I believe our fundraising is now nearing $10,000, if not over, which is pretty good. I think our high to this was probably about $8,000. So it was a very good walk, and I believe Blue Door exceeded their fundraising efforts by three or four percent. So it was very, very good.
Thank you for all you did to pull everyone together, and it was an enjoyable walk for our community. So thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Johns, please.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say Assalamu alaikum to my Muslim friends. Friday evening, Muslims around the world in East Gwinnebury began observing Ramadan. And for those that don't know, during Ramadan, Muslims fast between sunrise and sunset. And so my hope is that one day within East Gwinnebury, we can have an iftar dinner and break fast with our Muslim friends. So I just wanted to say that, Madam Mayor, Ramadan Kareem.
Thank you very much. Are there any other announcements? Not seeing any. I will move to item E, and that's deputations. I'd like to welcome Jay Kelson. On behalf of Kelson, making a deputation to committee regarding the deferral of development charges for 1-7611 Woodbine Avenue. Good to have you with us today.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and members of council.
Apologies, the mic is not on. You would just have to turn it on. Yes, it's on now, and it turned off.
You should have a red light in front of you.
Yes. There we go.
There we go. Sorry about that. Good morning, Madam Mayor and members of council. Thank you very much for having me here today. My name is Josh Kelson, and for many years, my family has either lived in, worked in, or run our business in the town of East Gwinnebury. And I'd like to think we've been a little bit of a success story in the area, and currently, I think are the largest employer in East Gwinnebury. So I'm here because our growth is continuing, and we would like to move forward with some development that is attached to our property. If we could maybe just change the slide. So we're looking for an expansion. Currently, we have our business at Two Bales in the industrial subdivision there, and we own the land behind there. If we could maybe just move on to the next one for one second. So this is the location on the northeast corner of Davis Drive and Woodbine Avenue, between Garfield right to the north and Woodbine to the east, Davis to the south there. So that provides a little bit of an overview. So as part of this, the part of the area is our own expansion of our facility. It's a 75,000 square feet expansion in order to bring some state-of-the-art manufacturing fabrication facility to sheet metal duckwork facility that we are looking to expand upon. And if we could maybe flip just to the next slide, this is the overall site plan. So that's up in the top right-hand corner there, our facility. But it also involves a bunch of other service and commercial and industrial space as well. So a total of 15 and a half acres being developed, 111,000 roughly square feet of industrial space, 75,000 of that being our own, and then 63,700 square feet of retail and restaurants, commercial space. So maybe we can move on to the next. This is sort of Phase 1A and B of our development. So that's our building there essentially. And we also are looking at putting in, or we are, as part of the submission, putting in a private sewage service facility, because there is not that service in the area. So that would be at our cost, we're putting that in as part of Phase 1A, and then Phase 1B would be service and commercial development. We're, I'm here, obviously, because, you know, while we have had some success and try to continue to expand and want to bring more local jobs to the area and more local manufacturing, particularly facility jobs, that's what we would bring, as well as other, you know, opportunities for industrial and commercial employment. Because right now, I think vacancies are only around 4% in the town. So this would bring some more opportunity through our development for that across the board. But we're, you know, we're not a large multinational. We don't have, you know, tremendously deep pockets. We're sort of financing and growing at the pace that our business allows. So I'm here to ask for that support in terms of some help with relief on the development charges from the town of East Gwinnebury, and also, we've asked from the region of York. And in order to, you know, look at that, if we could maybe just flip on, I'd just like to give you an idea of the overall plan. So Phase 1A would be our building, Phase 1B would be service and commercial, Phase 2 would be sort of the end or the rest of the service and commercial phase. And then flip on to the next slide, please. Phase 3 would be further industrial space as well. And then the next slide. And this is sort of some pictures, just renderings that the architect has done to give you a sort of feel for what we're proposing. So this is some of the service and commercial space here. We want it to be the kind of development where people can also walk around and be a part of the community. Next slide, please. That's sort of an overarching view of the whole development with our facility in the top right-hand corner, industrial on the left, and then service, commercial in the other buildings. And our current facility is just down in the bottom right-hand corner here. Next slide. So we hired the Altus Group to kind of look at this development and give some impact statements. So they're estimating about 1.4 million in property taxes to be contributed to the town as part of it, and the region, and local school boards, et cetera. The construction impact, roughly 717 jobs throughout the duration of the construction, about 85.7 million in wages, salaries for households through sort of the whole development, and as well as the economic benefits upon completion. So around 251 million in economic activity, 130 million occurring locally, 46.4 million in wages, approximately 20 million of that in local wages. And then lastly, about 17.4 million roughly in government revenues from the development. We could maybe just go to the end. So with that, I guess, you know, overarching, what I'm here to do is ask that, you know, I think the development and our facility will bring a lot of benefit to the town and the region, certainly to us. And I would ask that, you know, in support of local business, and especially given the current environment where we don't really know, you know, what the future holds with certain political things going on and whatnot, this is a large investment on our part, and we need whatever help and support that we can get. So we are asking for deferral for a five-year period on the development charges from the town, and then also from the region accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from members of council? Counsel, go ahead. Sorry, did I miss a hand? Counsel Leahy, go ahead, please.
Thank you through you, Madam Mayor. This is extremely exciting, the presentation that you've brought us today, and particularly as a Ward 3 counselor. While serving all of East Gwinnebury, it's nice to see that investment that you're taking in Ward 3 specifically, and much needed, much needed at this time. And I'd just like to say, because you didn't toot your own horn too much, but I'd like to toot your horn for you a little bit, by acknowledging the good relationship that the town has always had with Kelson, and that moving forward, you have a track record of being a good community member. So I wanted to acknowledge that while we debate and discuss your request today. My main point is that I feel that the timing of this is good, because we just had a growth management meeting and special workshop a couple of weeks ago, and the outcome of that growth management meeting was that we, it is imperative for East Gwinnebury to relieve the tax burden from residential taxpayers and property taxpayers, and we need to boost and improve and increase the industrial and commercial tax base. So you're not only creating substantial number of jobs and bringing an incredible investment in terms of wages into the community directly, but you're also potentially paying 1.4 million dollars in property taxes. So it seems to be all good news from my perspective. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
How many employees do you have at this point?
At this point, we're between 400 and 500. It's increasing as we go along, but.
And many are residents?
There are a number who are residents, and, you know, some are not. It pulls from around the areas, but yeah, definitely.
Thank you. Counselor Johns, and then Counselor Crohn.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'm, obviously, again, the environment that we are sitting in, and I think that, I think that people are just actually trying to look for certainty. And I think that once we have certainty, I think money within the economy will continue to flow. I think when there is uncertainty, what ends up happening is that people will sit on the sidelines with their investments, and it becomes challenging times. And I think that, I don't, I don't know, like, so the way that the motion is sat, sitting before us, is that for us to just receive simply the deputation. But I do, I'm not sure which staff member would handle this question, but then I would have a follow-up from it. But do we actually have a policy framework against deferral of development charges? Because echoing Counsel Leahy's comments, yeah, like wholly support what you're doing and the success you've had, and we should attempt to be supportive for you going forward to give you certainty. And so, yeah, so do we actually have a framework instead of just, you know, random wonderful folks in our community coming up and asking for a deferral?
General Manager Marshall, go ahead, please. General Manager Marshall, go ahead, please.
So through you, Madam Mayor, no, we do not have a framework or a policy for a deferral of development charges on non-residential development.
Okay, so my follow-up, so my follow-up would be, Madam Mayor, that in addition to the motion or to receive the deputation, I think it would be great if we could entertain an amendment to that whereby we're directing staff to review a policy framework for the deferral of development charges.
I have Counselor Roy DiClemente. Crohn, then thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. You're very gracious. Through you, Madam Mayor, to Mr. Kelson, thank you for coming here. I think we approved this in our last term. And then COVID threw a curve ball at everyone. And so I'm glad you're toughing it out and sticking with it. It seems like you've, you were at our growth management workshop that we had a week or so ago, because this is what we need. We need more commercial and industrial development here. So thank you for sticking with it. A question about the 1.4 million in property taxes. Does that represent the total municipal, regional, and Board of Education, or just our slaves?
No, that's the total.
Okay. So that, in many respects, when you take our municipal portion, it would be probably a point and a half in property taxes that we wouldn't have to implement. That would take care of that. So I'm, I'm more than happy and supportive of us developing a policy. You're the second, I'll say, medium and small business person that has been to me in the last three months concerned about development charges and the impact that it's having on development here. We certainly can help you with the municipal portion. The regional portion, I think you're up against a tougher customer in getting some relief there, but.
They have asked that the town go first in this instance, and then they will review their policy accordingly.
Oh, very, oh, very nice of them. For my colleagues here, I am more than happy to support a, Counselor Johns proposed friendly amendment to this, that we give direction to staff about developing a policy, but also I would be more than happy to entertain a deferral, because I think it's the right thing to do. We know right now, as each minute ticks by, there's more and more uncertainty with our economy. Anything we can do to help and support our local businesses, I think is absolutely worth it. So thank you for sticking with it.
Thank you.
Counselor Roy DiClemente?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think we're, as a council, aligned on this matter. And in fact, I had already drafted a resolution asking that the matter be referred to staff. And I've sent it to the clerk, but the matter be referred to staff for a report. It was more specific to your application, but basically looking at a report presenting options that would allow for a framework for us to defer the development charges both at the municipal and the regional level. Because that's, that's really where, that's the lion's share of those charges.
Yes.
And it's not, it's not an uncomplicated matter, because you are looking at some, you know, sanitary connections. And that issue of when you have to pay the DC based on when you connect to sewers is also a matter that we need to consider. So it's, it's not just a simple deferral, but there's, there's more, there's more policy issues that I think we need to address. But fundamentally, you know, the expression, you know, a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush. You are a local business who is already operating here, and you're looking to expand advanced manufacturing in East Gwillingbury. And that's, you know, that's something that needs to be commended and supported however we can. So I'm pleased to also support that. Again, the regional piece of it is much bigger, but every little bit helps. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Now, are there others as well? Counselor Crothers, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I think it's, it's already been said how much we have been looking forward to increasing our non-residential tax base. And I think, you know, we need to walk the talk. If we say this is what we want, then how do we encourage it? And DC deferral seems like a way to do it. To Counselor Roy DiClemente's point, though, let's make sure we're doing it with open eyes, that we understand all the implications and what we can do to help navigate that for you. So I'm happy to support the motion to have staff bring something back to us so that we can understand how, what the implications are, and make sure there's nothing that we're overlooking. But like I said, we need to really walk the talk. That we say we want more business, what can we do to help you? So thank you.
Counselor Leahy, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much. One last comment with regard to the motion. Do we need to put a timeline for the staff to report back to us in order to keep the process moving forward? And so in order also to support the deputation, so that with the regional component, if they're waiting on what we decide, what would the timeline we be looking at for the knowledge of the deputant?
Go ahead, please.
Madam Mayor, first of all, we fully understand and have been working with this local business for many years and are very supportive of trying to help them expand. And so we understand that time is of the essence. To provide an exact timing to come back, I'm going to suggest that we note that we will come back as soon as possible, once Mr. Marshall has had a chance to take a look at this and bring you back something that hopefully you can be supportive of, and that we can continue then to work with our regional partners to advocate, to ensure they do their part, as well to support this business that isn't just benefiting East Gwillingbury, it's benefiting York region. So you have our commitment on that.
Sorry, maybe I could just add, I think there was some discussion with the region that they would, you know, be going to meeting in April potentially. So, you know, not to put too fast a timeline on it, but if we could have some, something back before then, that would be great, because I was hoping to be in the ground about a year ago.
Counselor Roy DiClemente?
Then it may be prudent for us to ratify this resolution at our council meeting later today, so that staff will have that, the council resolution rather than committee resolution, to be able to approach the region.
Thank you. Counselor Johns?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'm happy to follow Counselor Roy DiClemente's lead, as she has drafted a motion and sent it to the clerk. She did make a comment about how it was specific to Kelson, and again, fully supportive. But I just don't want to lose sight of the fact that my comment about the policy framework to allow for that to happen, or allow for that to occur moving forward, so that we have a framework, and then it's transparent for the community as well.
Counselor Roy DiClemente?
I think we can do both. And I'd like to see us do both, actually. And I think the clerk is, I can see from here that she's typing, and there's more than two clauses there.
No other speakers at this time? I believe I have, yes?
Through you, Madam Mayor, there's been some proposals, but I'm just going to bring forward the draft resolution on the screen. Counselor Johns, you had introduced the essence of the change, and Counselor Roy DiClemente had provided some warning to that effect. However, I suspect that this is going to be further tweaked to include a provision around policy.
Counselor Roy DiClemente, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I think that, that what we will do is, the next clause would be that council requests staff to prepare a large framework or a proposed policy to allow for council's consideration on deferrals of ICI DCs. And I think Mr. Valcich wants to add to that.
Please.
Madam Mayor, it may be easier to blend the second piece and the first one. So I would suggest for your consideration, the council refer the request to staff for a report presenting options within a policy framework to permit support for the deferral. So the policy framework is going to kind of be part and parcel, not only to deal with this one, but to allow us then to consider others as well. So if that works for a committee, that might be what you might want to think about.
I'm seeing agreement right across here. So thank you. So this has been moved by Counselor Johns. And do we have a second or with, oh, I'm sorry, it's committee. I don't need that. All those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much. We follow your steps as you go along. Your building is very wonderful to see on a regular basis. And I'm sure it's going to be an interesting step for all of us to watch as it grows even further. All the best.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council.
Thank you. We are now at Item F1, and this is Presentations. M. Gaston, on behalf of Delta Urban, Inc., making a presentation to committee regarding G1 Development Services Planning Branch Report, DS 202504, Extension of Draft Plan Approval, Subdivisions with the Community of Sharon, Part of Lots 8 to 11, Concession 2, Files 19T07002, 19T08001, 19T08002, 19T08003. And this is in relation to Item G1.
Awesome. Well, good morning, Madam Mayor, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Mustafa Gastan from Delta Urban. To be honest, all I've been thinking about are the pancake events. So there's always wonderful events happening at the town. So it's really great. But I really want to talk to you about a request, as you mentioned, Item G1, with respect to the condition of draft approval extension for three years. I appreciate the matter was heard at the previous committee meeting, and there were a number of questions raised, so I wanted to address those. We are asking for the 36-month extension, just to provide us additional flexibility. And I know there were concerns regarding whether we're approving older standards or conditions that may not apply to the current requirements for the municipality. And one of the items was talked about was with respect to the home standards and requirement. And I just wanted to confirm that all the owners who are going to be pulling building permits and building those houses, they're going to be in accordance with the current building code requirements. So we're going to be following those current standards. And with respect to even added sustainability requirements, all the owners who are listed are part of the region's Sustainable Development Incentive Program. So all these homes will be actually built to even greater standard for energy requirement, washroom requirement, and for water consumption and usage. So everything on that will be built to standard. And in terms of all the infrastructure that will be implemented, majority of the infrastructure is already in place. So it's already been built. There are houses on one side of the road or occupy a part of the road. So there's already in place, it's already built to existing standard. But any new infrastructure that's going to be added, it's also going to be adhering to current municipal standards. So it's not going to be working on 2012 or prior standards, whatever currently in place. So that will all be in there. And as, as for the planning component, there was a question of whether the subdivision could be designed differently, or there could be, we've learned from previous mistake that we could enhance these communities and plans. And the part of it is, because the infrastructure is already in place, and main community components like the schools, parks, and roads are in there, it kind of already dictated how the community is going to be set up. So there's really not much of an opportunity to change the layout of these communities. The only thing is, if there's going to be new requirements or infrastructure, that will follow the current standards. And so our request for the 36 months, as I know there was contemplation of the last meeting for 18 months, we do prefer the 36 months for added flexibility. As you know, the owners have been here in the community for the past decade. They have invested millions of dollars in building their infrastructure. So it is in their interest to start building their homes and get revenue back for the investment made. As you know, there is a lack of allocation that resulted in this delay. But over the past three, four years, we've been working diligently with the town and the region on building a maiden Sharon solution to create additional allocation. We've spent close to a million dollars and a half to date on studying and designing that infrastructure. We're hoping to get that in place this year, but we are faced with a lot of obstacles. The design hasn't been approved yet, but we are hoping to have it done in 2025. But it may carry itself over into 2026. And that would cost somewhere in the range of $6 million. And so this money, that's not going to be DC recoverable. So there's no interest among any of the owners to delay registration and not build the houses and sell it. If the market is there, we're putting a lot of money invested in to complete the community, that if we can register within an 18-month timeframe, we would do it. But recognizing the current economic times and everything, we feel that a 36-month timeframe is, provides more relief to them. It would be a bit impactful to having to register, and there is no market. And now we're struggling with the additional financial burden, in addition to all the money that we invested. So we appreciate all your support in accepting our extension request over the past 10 years. And we would appreciate if you consider our request for another 36 months, just to provide us with the added flexibility. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Counselor Roy DiClemente, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Mr. Gaston. Just, I'm wondering if you can comment a little bit further on this Sharon inline storage solution. I have a letter that you wrote to the landowners group and that you forwarded to me dated February 6. So it's pretty recent, where you said that the inline storage solution was expected to be completed by September of this year, and that allocation could be available up to six months before the completion of that project. So conceivably, you could be pulling building permits within the next couple of months. And yet you're here asking for a three-year extension.
So since that letter, we've had several meetings with our consultants and regional staff. The latest one was on February 28. We are meeting again with them tomorrow to try to get the design approval. But we've faced a couple of obstacles since then, which I'm happy to share with council later, that in addition to an added deadline imposed by the region to get the work completed, that may result in the work not happening this year. But it, we are planning for it, we're pushing for it. So the thing is, if it does get approved and we are going to get it done, we will get it done in place this year. But in a situation where we're unable to address it, and we have a very tight timeline, it may get pushed out. And one of the main items is, if it gets pushed out to another year, with cost escalation and everything, we're really uncertain about the financial viability. So our concern is, if we get a shorter timeframe of 18 months, and things get pushed to next year, and cost escalation happens, we don't want to come back to ask for another extension. So the thought is, having the 36 months does provide that flexibility. And again, if we are building the infrastructure, we're putting another $6 million in investments. It's going to be to our interest to try to register and build those houses, so we can recoup some of the funds that we invested.
So we approved the inline storage solution in 2020. And even if you're delayed by yet another year on that inline storage solution, you still have six months before that inline storage solution is complete for you to pull building permits. So you're still within that 18-month window.
The main, and you're correct on that part. And I'll be honest with you, it hasn't for a lack of trying to not get it done. I've been personally involved in it on a day-to-day for the past couple of years. It's became a very complex project, just because we need to, it's within regional infrastructure and asset. So it took another layer of coordination. But my concern is, if it does get punted down to 2026, we have to re-tender it to get updated pricing. It's uncertain whether we're going to be getting the same rates we're getting today. And if that is the case, then there's going to be the likelihood of the owners supporting and proceeding forward. But if costs creeps, and the scope, and things change, that makes it not financially viable, it may not end up happening. And it's a big risk. And so we're asking for that flexibility, so that if we do proceed with it, we would be within that timeframe, 18 months with work, subject to the market conditions. But if that doesn't take place, we don't want to be back requesting yet another extension and taking up council time. So hence the flexibility.
Madam Mayor, it seems to me that risk is inherent in the activity of doing development work. And so from my perspective, I will only be supporting an 18-month extension.
You will be.
Yeah. So I'll pass the mic back to you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you very much. Counselor Crothers, go ahead, please.
Thank you. If we granted a three-year extension, it doesn't mean that people are going to be moving in in three years. Three years just until you can start pulling building permits. After that point in time, how long do you have before we see people moving in? So my question is around, we want to see that community complete. Three years doesn't sound like a long time, except it's not three years. It's much longer than that. I believe you have another eight years after that. So can you just confirm how long it will be before people are moving in?
So with respect to timing of people moving in, it's just going to be a product of us having the full allocation to register the remaining units that are being stranded. And it's also a product of the market conditions. So theoretically, if we proceed with the inline storage, let's say this year, and the market conditions are in favor, there is an opportunity that those home constructions could start this year, and occupancy could happen as early as spring 2026. So it's really all tied to the availability of allocation and the market conditions.
My question is around, sorry, my question is around the maximum. What is the maximum amount of time?
Again, it's all tied to market conditions. So we could be in a position where we're registered, and we're selling the homes. But if there's no absorption, the market is not there, we're not able to, we wouldn't be pulling building permits to build houses, because there wouldn't be any buyers. But if we go to the market, and there's people interested in buying the homes, then we could deliver it much sooner. In terms of, there's no, really a maximum, if no one is buying the product or the houses, no one would be pulling building permits to build them. no one would be pulling building permits to build them. And so our goal, though, as I mentioned earlier, like, we have invested a lot of money in the infrastructure. We have, we are currently investing even more money to create capacity to build this community. So it is in our interest to get these homes built, sold, so we can get the revenue back.
So when you talk about market conditions, we're in a housing crisis. People need homes. So it has to do with the price point and the builder's profit on it. So, you know, we've come just to take the comment market conditions as a given, but really, we know there's a market for homes because we're in a housing crisis. So everything has to do with the price point of the homes and whether people are willing to pay that. So my concern is just if we grant three years, it's not three years, it's much longer than that. The community should have been complete ten years ago. And now we're asking for another ten years. And so I would be supportive of Counselor Roy DeClemente's eighteen months. I would have to hold my nose to even support that. I think it needs to be done now. And I think if you don't have a deadline, then we're just going to hear one excuse after another, and this community is never going to get done. So I will support the eighteen months because I think we need to get it done, but I would not be supportive of three years.
Counselor Leahy.
Thank you very much through you, Madam Mayor. I'm wondering if the deputant can remind everyone, because this project has been initiated in previous terms of council, exactly how many homes are we talking about?
So the number of homes that remain stranded is in the range of four hundred. So that's across about seven subdivisions. And the extension here only applies to roughly about three hundred of those four hundred units.
Thank you very much for that clarification. I think it's very important that we keep in mind the big picture. And despite all of the unfortunate delays and changes in the economy and politics and tariffs that went into place today and all of the significant impacts that those may have, I'm wondering, I want to acknowledge that it wouldn't make business sense for you to walk away from the investment that you've already made. Is that correct?
No, correct. Like, I mean, everybody's an active member of the community. They've been in East Gullumby for over a decade, and there's major interest amongst the landowners to get going and build out these communities because they've been investing a lot in it over the past ten years.
Exactly. And so I'm thinking back to our strategic plan, which talks about economic sustainability and environment sustainability and social sustainability and the importance of completing the communities, which is a common theme of our goals as a municipality. And so I wanted to suggest a potential compromise. And I'm not sure, I haven't, this idea came to me as we were sitting here discussing this and potentially discussing a change in the length of the extension. And I was wondering if the deputant may be amenable to considering that this would be the last extension, that if we approved of an extension of three years, that that would be the final extension and that there would be no opportunity in the future to extend it further, which is why you're coming here today. So would that be an option that we could consider and amend the information that we're discussing today for consideration?
Through you, Madam Mayor. It's quite difficult to say that would be the last extension. And again, it's all a product of timing for allocation and ability to register. And so if we don't have allocation, like, when we started this process about twelve years ago, the hope was to complete the community immediately. And that's why everybody rushed to build all the infrastructure. But would the, if there are no allocation is available, then owners wouldn't be in a position to register the balance of their development. Having said that, if allocation is available, there could be an opportunity that registration could take place. And so right now, it's all tied to the inline storage solution. Right now, we're eager to get it done this year. But if that doesn't come forward to fruition this year, or it doesn't happen, we're now tied to the upper york solution, which maybe now we're into twenty twenty-eight, twenty thirty. And so it's very difficult to say this would be the last one because we may not be in a position to register, even if we wanted to, by virtue of the allocation constraint. But I appreciate the.
Counselor Johns, and then Counselor Roy DeClemente.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I deeply respect my counsel colleague's position on the eighteen months. Where I differ is, is that I'm thinking about, again, economic conditions and uncertainty within the marketplace. And I think that if we do proceed with an eighteen-month, you know, most likely, we will be back here in twelve months in anticipation of what's closing on the six months. Like, I think the next twelve months are going to be challenging to move any product that sits within the market. And going back to my respect of my colleagues, I understand the position on the past and how we arrived here. But parking that, parking the history and parking the past and thinking about the current moment that we are in, I think that the motion before us is sitting at thirty-six months. And again, in previous to what I said in the last deputation regarding providing certainty in a marketplace that is becoming ever more uncertain, I think that we need to be doing everything we can to support our businesses in the community. And I don't see that this is any different from any other business. And I think that we need to be providing clarity. And while I recognize the past did bring us here, I think what we need to be doing is thinking in this moment. And so to that end, I'm happy to support the motion as it's currently written with the thirty-six-month extension.
Thank you. Counselor Roy DeClemente.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, this is just a confirmation through you to staff. In addition to the inline storage solution, I believe that this landowners group was also given allocation from our municipal reserve as part of the reserve that we had from Y D S S. So essentially, they already have some allocation, they just don't have enough to finish. So they could conceivably, if they were registered, they could be pulling permits right away because they already do have allocation. Is that the case?
Through you, Madam, excuse me, through you, Madam Mayor, yes. They would have to be able to demonstrate that they have sufficient allocation to remove the holding. So it would depend on what each individual developer has available to them.
But they did get some from our reserve.
Yes, they did.
So they already have some allocation. It's not just that the inline storage solution is what's holding them up altogether. There are some parties that do have allocation. Thank you. And I just, as an additional point, Madam Mayor, the reality is that, as our deputant mentioned to us, there are houses that are across the street from vacant lots. We have residents who are living in an unfinished neighborhood. They're looking out their windows and on their front doorsteps at weeds, stockpiled topsoil, construction waste, and their neighbors' garbage because the road network is in place and people are simply dumping garbage there. And so when you go for a walk in Sharon Village right now, it is not necessarily a nice place to go for a walk. It needs to get finished. So my position has been clear, and that's enough is enough, let's finish it. And I'm sorry if the profit margins aren't high enough to be ideal, but unfortunately, that's the risk that one takes when does this kind of work. Thank you.
I'm keeping a list here. I have Counselor Cruthers next, and I have others at this.
Thank you. I just, Madam Mayor, a question on process. We have a presentation and then we have a report from staff. And I'm hearing my colleagues talk about the motion before us. The motion before us is just to receive. I do have questions for staff, and I just want to make sure that we are going to have that handled separately and that right now, we're just talking to the deputant. And if anyone has questions for the deputant, we need to wrap that up first and then move on to the staff report where we can talk in more detail about the motion. And at that point, I would have a question for staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cruthers, and then Counselor Foster.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I don't want to bring doom and gloom to this. But how bad do things have to be and how sour does this have to turn for you to be back in front of us, or whoever happens to be sitting here, in thirty-six months looking for another extension? That's a loaded question, but just your interpretation.
Through you, Madam Mayor. So I guess, in part, I'll also, if I could respond to the comment from Counselor DeClemente, we do have some allocation right now. But the allocation that we received from the town's reserve was distributed amongst the seven landlords within the group. And so everybody got a portion of it, but it's effectively one-third of what everybody needs. So the concern is, yes, we could potentially go and register part of the plan now, go through that process, and we would start building some homes. But the question comes down to, is there sufficient homes to justify a building program? That's one. The second part is, if we do that, then we're going to be distributing the community with ongoing construction, only to have to come back again to start constructing remaining homes, just because it's not, it's one-third of what each subdivision needs. But in terms of the situation, following three years to request yet another thirty-six month extension, again, it's really tied to the allocation. If everybody has allocation in place, let's say market condition is semi-favorable, everybody could be in a position to register, start selling the homes and building them. But if the online storage doesn't come through, we're now tied to the upper york solution that the region is actively working on. So if that, right now, is going to happen in the first phase of twenty twenty-eight, things could slide. And so if that's the situation, we could come back, seek another extension, because again, for the past ten years, we have been tied to the regional works.
I just wanted to confirm the committee members of any other questions from the presenter at this time. Counselor Leahy, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much through you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to suggest that we only can focus on, and we should only focus on as a council, what is within our control. And we cannot question the deputant as to factors that he cannot control. And so in terms of dealing with politics and governments and markets, we need to take it one day at a time. But what we do have within our control today is, as a council, is whether or not we accept and receive and approve of a three-year extension. So I would like to suggest respectfully that we focus on what we can control and not on what the potential ups or downs of the market, which we cannot control. So I would be supportive of the three-year extension.
Go ahead, please.
Madam Mayor, I'm just picking up on some of the comments that have already been made, but I'm wondering if it might be appropriate at this point to move receipt of the presentation or deputation and then move into the development services portion of the agenda where this item can be deliberated and voted on. It seems that maybe that's where you're at.
Thank you very much, and I have a motion to receive. Counselor Cruthers. Sorry, Roy DeClemente. All those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much for being in front of us today, and we look forward to working along with you.
Likewise, thank you, and it's always a pleasure seeing everybody. Thank you very much.
We are now at item G of our agenda, development services, with Counselor Roy DeClemente in the chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two items on our agenda, prepared agenda, and the first is, shockingly, draft plan approval, extension of subdivision within the community of Sharon that we've just been discussing. So this actually lined up nicely. Ms. Bejane, did you, before I move, Ms. Bejane, did you want to present this report for us, please?
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. The report remains unchanged from the last time it came before committee. It is seeking an extension of three years, and the deputant has spoken to some of the rationale for that. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. I know there's been some discussion around what may have changed in the last number of years, and we can certainly speak to that should committee wish to hear.
Counselor Cruthers, go ahead, please.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to move the resolution with the change, the resolution as it is before us with a change for the period rather than three years being eighteen months. So I like to put that out there. And my question for staff is the same one I had when this was before us before. I'm trying to get an understanding on what we've learned since twenty-ten, knowing that by the time people actually move into these houses, it could be twenty thirty-five. So we're talking about a quarter of a century from when this plan was approved until now. I hear from the developer that we aren't, that so much can't change, that roads are already in place. And so what we've learned about walkability, for instance, and putting in some amenities that people can walk to, maybe that ship has already sailed. But I want to hear about those type of things. I want to hear about what has changed between twenty-ten approvals and what, the types of subdivisions that we are approving in twenty twenty-five, so we can have an idea of how dated this is going to be. I think we just need to go into this with open eyes, even if we can't change it. And I keep hearing, oh, we can't change that, and we can't change that. But still, I want to know what's changed in all that time.
Ms. Bejane, go ahead.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. With respect to planning, not much has actually changed in this period in terms of, you know, what lot fabric looks like, what low-density residential looks like. We have admittedly had some learnings around challenges with rear lane-type housing product, with parking issues and things like that. But I don't believe that's what's being contemplated here. For the most part, we're looking at single detached type of housing product. Where we do see changes and where the development will need to comply is on engineering standards. So things like width of roads, you know, that type of thing. And certainly on the Ontario Building Code, we've seen a number of changes since twenty-ten related to the enforcement of sustainability measures, whether that be insulation, increased efficiency for windows, heat recovery ventilators, those types of technologies. And we had seen for a period, there was a requirement to be electric vehicle-ready. That's no longer in the code, but we anticipate that things like that will come back. So that's where we tend to see changes. And certainly, any new development coming forward would have to comply to the current standards.
Thank you very much. So I think some of the changes that I've seen, not as a planner, but increased dependency on delivery. So everyone's getting their Amazon, their Uber Eats and that. So I know with, when we were looking at another subdivision that was approved quite a long time ago, that question came up, is where do these delivery services park, right? Because when that, when this was planned, that wasn't necessarily something that was in our society at the time. So I fear that when we let these things hang around too long, society moves along and the planning can't keep up because the roads are already in place and the servicing is already there, et cetera, et cetera. So my last question to you is, what are we going to do so this doesn't happen again?
Ms. Bejane?
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure I understand the question. I mean, do you mean in terms of having a long delay from registration to build?
Exactly, yeah.
Well, I think ensuring that, through you, Madam Chair, ensuring that the timelines align with the availability of allocation, because that was the single biggest contributor to why this took as long as it did. I think there was an anticipation that the U Y S S was going to go forward and servicing would be available. When that changed, then the developers were sort of left without allocation. And so we're unable to register until they have allocation available. So certainly, we've, we're working very collaboratively with both the development community and the region to plan for the next phases of growth and hopefully won't run into this because, you know, the developers are very much involved in those timelines.
So we only can hope, where there's nothing like concrete that we can do to prevent this, it's just, we have to hope it doesn't happen again? Is that what we're getting at?
Through you, Madam Chair. I mean, I think that's what, all we can do is make our best efforts to, you know, with, if something comes forward that we deem to be premature because of lack of availability of servicing, to try to discourage that. Although legally, we have limited options in terms of what we can do to refuse an application. But building on our relationship with the development community, I have every hope that they'll be understanding and that we can work collaboratively.
Thank you very much.
I have Counselor Johns and then Counselor Leahy.
Thanks, Madam.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I'm just, I'm, I'm thinking about the process that, you know, should this motion fail, because we just, we did just have it moved for 18 months, and if we disagree with that, should that motion fail? Is it my understanding that the applicant would have to do a resubmission and essentially resubmit application fees to go through this process again? How would that work?
Ms. Bejane?
I, I thank you, through you, Madam Chair. If the, the draft plan extension itself is not granted, whether it be for 18 months or for three years, and the draft plan approval lapses, it would require the applicants to sort of go back to the beginning. That being said, all of the items we talked to relative, related to zoning are already approved, so those would not change. It would essentially be a paper exercise and an additional cost, as you mentioned, Counselor Johns, but ultimately, we wouldn't end up substantively different than where we are today.
And as, as Chair, Counselor Johns, if this motion were to fail, I would entertain another motion with a different timeframe, in order to make sure that we don't leave this hanging.
Chair, so just in, in follow-up to that question, what would be the approximate application fees on 400 homes?
Through you, Madam Chair, I'd have to get back to you on that.
Okay, so where I'm going this with, my point is, is that, like, there was some comments, talking about regarding profitability on the homes. But really, what we're talking about is a profitability on the business. And so if a business, when you're talking about no profitability, what that means is, is that you are taking a loss. And so what the business would then determine is, is that if the environment isn't good, and perhaps there was hundreds of thousands of dollars being lost per home, based on the input costs changing in the environment, in the economic environment that we're in, we could end up in a scenario whereby the business decides that, you know what? The arriving at the cost of the application fee would be much less than taking losses on the homes and completing the community. And so to that end, we'll just take a step back, and we'll wait another 10 years until we go through the business cycle. And again, I'm going to come back to, I am supporting the 36 months, because that is being requested, and they understand their business better than I do. And given the fact that they want to recover costs, because they're, they're in a cost-recovery position right now, I think that I would rather work with them achieving their request within that 36-months timeframe, and hope that they don't come back again, versus them deciding, you know what, let's let it lapse, let's look to build somewhere else, and we'll come back in 10 years when the profitability can be recovered in an, an appropriate way in a decade from now. And so I just, I want to support the business to give certainty in a market that is, that is changing. And so, given that the Chair made the comment about should the 18-month motion fail, I'm going to be voting no on the 18-month motion, and I would be happy to introduce a motion for 36 months. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Leahy, and I apologize, I didn't see your hand earlier. Go ahead, please.
Thank you very much, through you, Madam Chair. I just want to remind everyone of the big picture, because the big picture is that the population is forecasted to reach, in East Gullimbury, 88,700 by 2041, and 128,600 by 2051, according to the growth targets from the provincial government. And we need to be looking at every way possible that we can support the building of homes. And the deputant has made it clear that in order to support that eventual building of the homes, that we need to be flexible in our approach and grant a three-year extension, which is what they are requesting. We need to keep in mind, we are working with the, both the federal government and the provincial government, as well as the region, and that it is no fault of theirs that the, that a previous government provincially created significant delays in the sewage solutions for York region. So what I would like to recognize and support is the continued, ongoing relationship that we have with our, with our development community, and that while they are businessmen, and we understand their risks, and they, they could tell you better than any, than any of us sitting here on council about the risks of doing business, that I am eternally optimistic in my approach, that we will be looking, within 10 years, that we will have completed communities, which is our, our duty and responsibility to deliver on the housing, when we are in an affordability, an attainability crisis for housing, with this population growth, which is significant in East Gullimbury. So I would like to keep that top of mind when we are deciding on the length of the extension. Thank you very much.
Counselor Crone, and then Counselor Carruthers.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Chair. I, I think it's safe to, to say and to recap, there's a lot of frustration on this table with the situation we find ourselves in. And I think the presenter today from the developers understands our frustration. You know, had this been your first request for an extension, I think there would be no, no issue, but it's, and circumstances are, are there for, for asking for those extensions. But here we are. And I'm, if, if we had this vote the last time, it was before council, I think I probably would have gone with an 18-month extension. But today, with looking at what's happening in the world, I, I just looked at the Dow Jones, it's down 725, TSX composite index is down almost 600. So there is, you know, I spent the weekend talking to friends and family, some who are in the auto industry, and they're worried about whether they're going to have jobs next week, because of what's going on with all this craziness in the world. So I can appreciate, as, as a form of businessperson, the anxiety that, that your, your investors may have, and your, and your colleagues. So I'm, given all the uncertainty and the nonsense that's going on today, I, I would grudgingly support a, a 36-month, 36-month extension, because, you know, we just talked about in the last few, few meetings about supporting our business community. I, I think, I think that's what's guiding me at this point, is that we need to be supportive and understanding that we're in very uncertain times. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Crone. Counselor Carruthers, I know you had your hand up. I just want to give Mayor Haxson and Counselor Foster an opportunity to speak before I turn the, the mic over to Counselor Carruthers. Any?
I'm fine.
You're fine? Okay, so Counselor Carruthers, please go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to correct something that was said, that was implied that 18 months is not supportive of housing. I see it quite the opposite, that I want to get these houses built faster, and that's why I put for the, the motion for 18 months. I think everything that was said about the need for housing, about the, the crisis, and everything else that was said, it applies to 18 months, and that's why I'm, I am supporting 18 months. We need to get the, this community finished, for all the reasons that Roy, Counselor Roy DeClemente has mentioned, we've been waiting so long, and this needs to get done quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carruthers. Counselor Johns?
Thanks, Madam Chair, and I'm looking for maybe some clarity on logistics. So I noted that should the 18-month motion fail, that I would reintroduce a motion at 36 months. I am trying to get an idea where my colleagues are, but there's some, no comments from some other voting members. And so I want to ensure that there is less risk in having a no vote on both. Is there a way to word an amendment to make sure that, is there a way to safeguard my motion, that should the first one fail, that the, by wording it simply differently, that I don't jeopardize, due to lack of indication of vote, that I don't jeopardize going to a no vote again? Is, and I would welcome my colleagues' comments.
So, at this point, I think, Madam Clerk, can you maybe guide me? But I, my understanding would be that we would have, Counselor Johns would propose an amendment to the motion, and we would vote on the amendment to the motion. Is that correct?
Through you, Madam Chair. The motion as it stands right now was presented with Counselor Carruthers. That is what's on the table, so that, the amendment would be taking precedent over that motion, which has been presented.
Yes.
So, Counselor Johns, this would be the time where you would present an amendment to that motion.
And that would, that... Thanks, Madam Clerk, and through you, Madam Chair. So that would, the 36-month vote would take a precedent over the 18-month vote?
So what you would be doing, Counselor Johns, is you would make a motion to amend Counselor Carruthers' motion to change 18 months to three years, back to three years, and we would vote on that amendment. And then we would vote on the resolution that would state, so that's how we would work on it. Is that where you'd like to go?
Yes, I would like to reflect on that information, and if any of my other colleagues wish to speak, then I would welcome that, while I reflect on that opportunity.
Well, we're at the moment now, because I've asked our colleagues. So if you'd like to put a motion on the table, we will vote on it. So, so make a motion that you amend the, I'm trying to help you here, Counselor.
Yeah, I know you are, and I just got what I was looking for.
Even though I disagree with you.
I'm happy to make an amendment for 36 months, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to amend the original motion, moved by Counselor Johns, to change it back to 36 months. So the, this is to amend the motion. All those in favor? Then that motion carries. So we now have a motion on the table that says, that is basically as it was originally presented, moved by Counselor Carruthers. Any discussion on the motion?
Can we have the motion up on the, on the screen, so everybody understands what we're voting?
It's in your agenda, Counselor Leahy. It is as was printed in the agenda at this point.
Thank you very much. So just to be clear, because we've been back and forth a couple of times, I want to be crystal clear that everybody understands what they're voting on. So we are voting on the original motion, as it appears in our agenda...
Yes.
...of 36 months.
It says three years.
Yeah, three years, of three years, correct. Not 18 months, correct? 36 months.
Yes.
So we are now voting on 36 months.
Absolutely.
That's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
So we have a motion on the table from Counselor Carruthers for 36 months.
As amended.
As amended. You got it, the, Madam Clerk? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. The next item on, on item on our agenda is a proposed amendment, the official plan amendment for 19820 Hall and Landing Road. This is an introductory memo. Ms. Bejane, do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, just, this is an introductory memo for an ICI, largely ICI development that is coming forward. So happy to entertain any questions that members of committee may have.
Can I have a motion to receive the memorandum? Moved by Counselor Foster. Any questions from members of committee? Go ahead, Counselor Foster.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Not a question as much as just a comment. So I've had the opportunity to deal with this developer a few times about this, this development. The one thing that keeps coming to my mind every time we speak to them is, they're considering this a gateway to EG, and it's on the corner, it's right there when you pull into town. I hate to say it, but it's kind of a unsightly intersection, let's put it that way. I can fully support what they're trying to do here. We've talked about this one long enough. I think it's about time we give them the go-ahead to, to make it happen.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that motion carries. Thank you very much. That brings us to the end of the prepared agenda. Ms. Bejane, did you have anything further to add?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to note that it came up in discussion on the previous item, concerns relative to property standards in, in the area, the unfinished community. So I just wanted to commit that staff will work with Mr. Gesan and the developers that he represents, to see if we can make some headway in terms of addressing some of those property standards matters.
Thank you, Ms. Bejane. With respect, we've been at this for 14 years, and not a lot of, not a lot has changed. So, seeing Counselor Leahy, anything further?
Yes, one further point in this section, before we move on to the finance section. Since we approved of the extension, in order to keep the, the motion moving forward, would it be considered by the rest of council that we put forward a motion, that we consider that at council later this afternoon, to approve that, to keep the process moving forward?
We just gave them three years, Counselor Leahy. What's the rush?
Well, there's, there seemed to be quite, quite a bit of rush, so I thought if we did it today, rather than in the future, that, that it would just continue...
Well, you can certainly put a motion on the floor, Counselor Leahy, if you'd like to have us ratify item G1 at our council meeting today.
Very well, then. If, if it's just a matter of continuing to move it forward, and, and the work that they potentially have to do with the region, et cetera, then I think that it, why not put it on the agenda? I don't see any reason why not. So I'd like...
So are you moving?
Yes, I'm moving that motion, please.
So we have a motion on the floor, moved by Counselor Leahy, that we ratify item G1 at our council meeting later today. Any comments or questions on the motion? Counselor Carruthers?
We have a, a process and a procedure of sober second thought, that we, when something is, is moved at CWC, we wait for the following council meeting, in case there's any information, other information that comes up. And it should be a very rare occasion that we move something forward more quickly, and there should be strong rationale. And the rationale of why not, to me, is not strong enough rationale of why we would go outside of our procedure and, and ratify something that's not of imminent concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the motion? Counselor Johns?
Yeah, it, I would be happy to support Counselor Leahy's motion, if, given the fact that we were on a timeline for the, the loss of the application with the deadline. But I believe that is, it's actually beginning of April or end of April, so to that end, I'll be voting no to the motion.
Okay, any other questions? All right, so we have a motion on the table from Counselor Leahy. All those in favor? Opposed? And that motion is defeated. Anything else? Seeing none, I'll turn the chair back to you, Madam Mayor.
We are now at item H, Finance, with Counselor Johns in the chair.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. So item H, there's one item, rather large item. I'm going to be looking for a mover to get tabled the finance presentation and report 2025-01, unaudited, unaudited 2024 year-end financial position. Can I get a mover for that? Counselor Crone, thank you so much. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Marshall for the setup.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. We have the finance team here to give you a presentation on the financial results, the unaudited financial results for 2024. This is here a month earlier than you normally would see it, so I would like to thank the team and, and the extended management team as well, for their participation in getting this forward to us in this timeline. The KPMG is our external auditors, and they'll be in the building in two weeks to perform their external audit. And there'll be entries, further entries, that will result through this, through the audit process. And any of those entries that impact the operating surplus will be shown in the report that we will be providing you in June, that shows the final audited financial statements. The other thing I wanted to mention is that you'll see that the, the list of reserves does not include development charges. That will be provided as required by legislation in a separate report next month. So with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Ms. Adema, who'll kick off the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Good morning, everyone. Next slide, please. As we approach the last stages of preparing the 2024 financial statements and getting ready for the year-end audit, this slide shows us the expected year-end position for the budget-to-actuals variances. On the tax-supported operations, we expect a surplus of approximately 1.7 million. Stephanie Roman will review in a later slide the items that contribute to this surplus. But essentially, we had higher revenues than budgeted, and in some cases, less costs, resulting in some funds left over that will be contributed to reserve. From a rate or water, wastewater perspective, the expected year-end surplus is also close to 1.7 million. On the fee-supported side, we have a different story. However, this is what we expected to see for 2024. The budgeted year-end draw from reserve to support these operations was expected to be close to 1.7 million. was expected to be close to 1.7 million, and we ended up close to 1.9 million in a draw. The fee reserves are established to support the fluctuations in development activity in these years where we see the draws at this level are planned for and are able to be sustained using those reserves. At this point, I'm going to pass over to Stephanie Ramon, manager of accounting, to review the items that contribute to each of these variances. Once that is complete, I will be back to review the recommendation of the reserve accounts.
Adjust that up? Okay. Good morning. We'll move over to the next slide. I'll be walking you through the details of the town's twenty twenty-four year-end position and providing the explanations for how the actual financial results compare to the budget. The year-end position from tax-supported program areas resulted in an unaudited surplus of 1.7 million. While this seems like a large surplus, the majority of this is related to one-time events or items that should not be included in base budget. Revenue from supplementary taxes, reassessment, and payment in lieu contributed 670,000 to the surplus. This revenue is unpredictable in nature and fluctuates year over year. Additionally, revenue from penalties on late tax payments, general receivables, fees and fees for account changes, as well as bylaw fines and licenses, resulted in additional revenue of 775,000. Within the Parks, Recreation, and Culture Department, there was an increase in the number of program registrations and programs offered in twenty twenty-four. While this increase resulted in additional costs for supplies and materials and program instructors, the revenue generated from these programs exceeded the additional costs, resulting in a $216,000 contribution to the surplus. Library operations experienced a one-time surplus of 124,000, and this was mainly related to temporary staff vacancies. Within the Waste Management Program, we saw an increase in disposal costs. However, a combination of cost savings and increased user fees and grant revenue resulted in contributions of 115,000 to the surplus. Throughout the organization, we saw one-time savings of approximately $92,000 in training, professional development, and membership costs. These savings were related to planned delays and are not expected to be reoccurring. We can move to the next slide. This slide summarizes the items that were decreasing the surplus. We saw modest savings in salaries and benefits resulting from salary gapping and delays in hiring. However, the increase in costs for contracted services and benefits led to a net pressure of 118,000. Pressures in legal services related to additional litigation, court proceedings, and new claims resulted in pressures of 98,000. Additional costs for software licenses, subscriptions, additional services, and new users resulted in pressures of about 53,000. And lastly, an increase in contracted services related to locates and the Integrity Commissioner resulted in pressures of 46,000. So that summarizes the variances that make up the tax-supported operating surplus. I'll pause here for any questions.
Counselor Crone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, I wanted to, through you, to our presenter, I just wanted to clarify. You said some of the savings were as a result of salary capping and delays in hiring?
Some of the pressures were related to salaries and benefits.
Okay, because it's not often we hear that.
Yeah.
So it is appreciated. Thank you. Thanks, Madam Mayor, for the astute pickup on the ball drop that I made there. I forgot that I was chairing. I was thinking about the numbers. And yes, I am chairing this, this section. So thank you, Madam Mayor, for the save. Any other of my colleagues have any questions? No, seeing none, back to you. Go ahead.
Thank you. We'll move over to the next slide. In the rate-supported area, or what we refer to as Water and Wastewater Program, there was a surplus of 1.685 million. Approximately 65% of the surplus here comes from increased in user fee revenue. This is a direct increase in water volume as well as new accounts. Increases here were accounted for where possible in the 2025 budget. However, water volume usage is difficult to predict and varies year over year. Additionally, 298,000 of the surplus relates to salary and benefit savings due to hiring delays and staff vacancies. This is not expected to continue in 2025. A further 251,000 of the surplus is related to one-time revenue related to new connections and cost recovery from developers for unassumed pumping stations. And this revenue is also unpredictable and inconsistent. Within the Water and Wastewater Program, there were a couple of areas with increased costs as well as some with cost savings. Some adjustments were made to the 2025 budget to reflect these, and these areas continue to be closely monitored and will be adjusted in further years if trends continue. I'll pause here for any questions on Water and Wastewater.
Any questions from my colleagues? Counselor Roy DiClemente?
Thank you, Counselor Johns, and through you to staff. This one point, I'll round up, 1.7 million dollars, I believe represents about a 14% surplus over operating. Is that correct?
I don't have the numbers handy. I don't know if anyone, if I phone a friend here?
Perhaps not. Through you, maybe that's something we can follow up with and come back to the group.
Okay, thank you. It just, it, it seems by comparison, it's similar to the, the entire town's operating surplus. And so it seems to me that we've been, we've, we, we may not have been budgeting appropriately, and an increase in water rates may not necessarily have been in order for 2025, from where I sit. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Roy DiClemente. Mr. Marshall, do you want to comment on that?
Sure, through you, Mr. Chair. One of the big reasons for the surplus is the water volumes. And I think we noted in our 2025 budget process that we adjusted the estimate for our water volumes up to, so that the increase, or so that would hopefully mitigate that surplus that we see. As Ms. Ramon has said, it's hard to predict the flows. So we've tried as best as we can. We've contacted the region as well with their estimates as well. So we've adjusted the, the volumes upwards. So hopefully, we will not see that magnitude of a variance in 2025.
Counselor Carruthers?
Thank you. So the increased volumes, part of that would be due to new accounts, right? Do we know if there is increased volumes, like across the board? Because that, that would be significant. If it was enough of an increase that everyone is now using more water, then that's something maybe we, we want to be talking about. Because I know my first term on council, the Environment Committee put forward a, a resource on how to reduce consumption of water and helping families to lower their water bills by reducing consumption. So I'm, I'm just trying to get a feel for, is the increased volumes just the new accounts? Or are people in East Goulambury using substantially more water than they have in the past?
Mr. Marshall, go ahead.
So through you, Mr. Chair. We haven't done the full analysis, but what the trend we are seeing is that it depends on, there's a couple of factors. One is actual use in terms of everyday use. But there's also increases in terms of, if we have a dry season, people tend to water their lawns or fill their pools more often. So those types of fluctuations in weather as well also impact the volumes that are used. So it's a combination of, of normal use and use associated with.
Thank you very much. I, I think it's something that we might want to dig into more because the repercussions of substantially using more water has huge environmental impacts. And if, and councils declare a climate emergency, I think just having a little bit more of an understanding of what's happening with that. Because as a society, you know, we have low-flush toilets, we have the front-loading washers. Everything is geared toward using less and less water. So I, I would like more information on that at, at some point, obviously, aside from this. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Carruthers. And I agree too, it's not just from the environmental standpoint, but from pocketbook issues. If we can increase the opportunity for better affordability, I wholly support your, where your thought process is going. Counselor Crone? Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate this, and my colleagues, I'm in alignment with my colleagues on this. I, this stuck out like a sore thumb to me when I saw it. And I think there's a heightened degree of sensitivity around our, our water bills as residents are, are, you know, very, you know, frequent and a reminder to me that we pay a lot for our water. So surplus is better than having a deficit. But too much of a surplus, it, it makes us wonder if we've, you know, estimated wrong. So I, I look forward to that analysis. I think it's, it's critical, and it'll help inform our decisions going forward on the next water budget. So those are my comments. Thank you. Thanks, Counselor Crone. Counselor Leahy, had you hand up?
Thank you very much. Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm looking at the agenda under the next section, which is Engineering and Public Works. And we actually have the 2024 Annual Summary Report for Town of East Goulambury Drinking Water Systems. I think there's an opportunity, when discussing that report, to discuss potentially some reasons around water use or possible increased water use. So I look forward to discussing some of those items there. But at, at this point, my fellow counselors also brought up, in terms of taxes and property taxes for residents. That was the first question I got when the agenda became public. I had a, a question from a member of the public, a high-level question, which is, if we have surpluses, why are our property taxes increasing? So I don't know if we want to address that at this particular moment in the presentation or save it until the end. But I think that that is a very good question for residents in general to be asking and for us to understand the rationale of the Finance Department in terms of why we have surpluses when we want to always keep residential property taxes and water, water, which is part of, of all of that taxes that the payments that the residents are making, that we, we, that the residents understand why we have surpluses and specifically in this waiter, water and wastewater area. So, yeah.
Thanks, Counselor Leahy. I think I'll, I'll follow your lead in the direction on the, talking about the comments at the end, because that'll allow us to, to get through the rest of this presentation and then wholly welcome the opportunity to be able to respond at the higher-level suggestions that you made. Well, let's move back to the presentation, and we'll go from there.
Sounds good. We can move to the next slide, then. The development and fee-supported area has fee revenue that is intended to be self-sustaining over time. The overall draw from reserve is approximately $218,000 greater than anticipated. This is related to the overall reduction in development activity as well as timing of planned, planning and engineering applications. And as Ms. Adema said at the beginning, this is expected. With that, I'll pause on any questions on this slide?
Counselor Leahy?
Thank you very much, through you, Mr. Chair. I do have a question. I'm just wondering if, if you, if my understanding is correct, because I was, I was calculating the numbers and checking the numbers because I was doing the math in my head. And, and I was thinking, it's not quite adding up with the first slide that you showed. So I'm wondering if there's a typo somewhere? In the revenues column, the amount is the same. But in the expenses column, the total here on this slide is 4,709,296. But when I added up the expense column of the first slide that Ms. Adema made, I, I, it came to a number of 5,284,988. So I'm just wondering if I'm misunderstanding something in the chart or if there is a typo in there?
Oh, there is a typo. Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, there is a typo here. The slide six, the one that we're looking at here, is the correct slide and shows the variance of 218,000. Apologies for that.
Great catch.
So, so through you, Mr. Chair. So then if the first slide and the sixth slide are not the same, can you, can you further explain the reason why they're not the same?
Sure.
And it's just a typo, or, yeah?
Through, through, Mr. Chair, this is an ever-evolving file, and these numbers have changed day by day as we go through this process. So I suspect it's just a version issue. The slide six is the correct numbers that we're reporting and what you'll see reflected in the next few slides that indicate the amount that's being contributed or drawn from the reserves. So apologies for a typo. It's just a very evolving file day by day.
Thank you very much for the clarification. I, I appreciate it when the math all adds up and aligns. Thank you.
Any other questions from committee members on this slide? I just have one comment. Like this slide speaks to the, the conversations that we're, we're seeing in regards to less, less homes being built in this economic environment and, you know, building, planning, engineering, and park development. Obviously, specific lines that are directly related. The one thing that I know Counselor Crone always talks about is the opportunity for new revenue sources. And under the fill operations, I think there's a huge opportunity for us to look within existing agreements to better understand what a changing economy looks like. And I would strongly encourage staff to be able to have conversations with, with our partners in the industry regarding fill operations to see what can be done about the opportunity to increase that revenue line. I just, I just think that any opportunity on increasing revenue on this slide should be looked at. And it, and it feels like four of the five are essentially fixed, but there's the one that, that might have the opportunity to, to be explored. So I just would encourage staff to do that. Okay, Counselor Leahy?
Thank you very much. Through you, Mr. Chair. So looking at this slide, which has the, the correct final totals, my concern is the same concern that I had when we were having our budget discussions, which is we are spending more money than we are bringing in. And there's a, a fundamental challenge here, which I'm concerned about with the ongoing uncertainty in the, in the markets for not only housing, but in the growth management meeting when our CEO acknowledged there'll be a few years of sluggishness. When then we look and we see in the column of budgeted contribution and draw that we are drawing significant amounts from our reserves. And so at a high level, I would like to have a conversation about how we're going to replenish the reserves and, and if the revenue continues to fall behind our expenses in the future, what specific strategies the Finance Department has to make up that shortfall?
So just following in line with what Counselor Leahy, your comments were previously about suggesting about the higher-level discussion at the end once it's tabled, because this speaks to kind of building and permits and engineering. So to follow your direction, as you spoke previously, to be able to table the, the higher-level conversation to the end. With that, if we could move on to the next slide? That would be great.
Certainly. And that wraps up everything on operating. I'll turn it over to Carolyn Brown for remarks on capital.
Thank you. Good morning. So in 2024, we spent almost $40 million on our capital projects. 30 million of that was related to the Health and Active Living Plaza. We also invested heavily in our road rehabilitation, excuse me, program, our downtown revitalizations, which are a council priority. And the King Street Playground replacement is included here just due to the, the size of the investment. Of our 178 projects that were open at the beginning of the year, we closed almost 40% of those. So 69 projects were closed throughout the year, which is great. We're now sitting at, well, as of the end of 2024, I should say, we've got 109 open capital projects with 80 million remaining. And important to note that this does not include anything that was approved through the 2025 budget process. So we always like to highlight the key open capital projects. We see continued spending on the Health and Active Living Plaza, our rehabilitation of critical infrastructure, the roads, bridges, et cetera. And then our Main Street revitalizations continue to be a priority. So that's all for capital. I'm going to turn it back to Ms. Adema.
Okay. So now that we have reviewed where the surpluses and draws are for each area, the question always is, where do those funds go? And where do they come from when we don't have enough? So our surplus is allocated based on these four main objectives. We first allocate the fee and rate-supported surplus to their respective reserves. So Water-Wastewater stays within Water-Wastewater, and the fee-supported reserves stay within their own program areas. Second, we review the tax-supported reserve balances for any current or forecasted negative balance, and we top those up accordingly. Third, surplus funds are allocated to asset replacement reserves up to the required annual contribution amount. Sometimes number two, number three overlap. For example, areas where there would be budgeted contribution. For example, areas where there would be budgeted contributions that are less than what is required through those asset management plans, we try and allocate the surplus where it's available. Finally, funds are allocated to the reserve accounts based on specific objectives and priorities of council. Next slide, please. From the tax-supported operations, the available surplus to allocate to the reserve is 1.676 million. I will go over the recommendations for committee's considerations of these funds. Our first allocation recommendation would be to the Park Structures Reserve of 250,000. This would be to accommodate the negative balance that's expected in the next couple of years and ensure that we have funds available for the replacement of some of our older parks. Second, a recommendation is to allocate 124,000 to the library reserves. As per the library surplus policy, we can contribute up to 7% of the library's net funding back to their operating reserve. This is the 54,000 that you see on the bottom of the slide. The balance of the surplus that came from the library program is 69,000 and the recommendation is to contribute this back to the library's asset management replacement reserve to assist with future replacement needs. With those two reserve contributions, that gives the library 100% of their surplus contribution back. The next recommendation is to contribute 200,000 to the information technology reserve. This would be to accommodate continued modernization initiatives and growth within the IT portfolio. This recommendation includes the contribution that will help assist in those areas. Finally, the balance of the reserve, of the surplus would, is recommended to be contributed directly to the roads reserve. This would accommodate the negative balances that's expected in the next couple of years with the unexpected bridge repairs and will help to sustain this reserve for the upcoming needs of the town. Next slide, please. In our fee-supported area, we can see here what the balances of each of the reserves are in the fee-supported areas. As previously noted, these reserves are intended to support fluctuations in development activity year over year. In some years, we do expect to see a draw. In other years, we can expect to see contributions and that is directly related to the fees that are being collected and the applications and the timing of what comes in. You can see here from the year-end balances, the building reserve has a healthy balance, so it can accommodate the $1.3 million draw and still maintain that healthy balance. We do see planning and park development in both a deficit position and plans are underway to review the fees and ensure these reserves are sustainable in the long term. Next slide, please. Finally, in our water and wastewater rate-supported program, the surplus will be contributed directly to the reserve. This will assist in achieving the target levels set out in the council-approved financial plan. In 2025, we will be completing a new water financial plan as legislated every three to four years. This will assist in a detailed rate review and the long-term needs of the asset management reserves. And we'll see the target rates and reserve contributions set out for the next four years. With that, that concludes our presentation and happy to take any high-level questions.
Great, thank you. So questions from the committee? I see Councilor Roy DiClemente has her hand up. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I don't know if it's a high-level question or maybe it's just, just a regular question, but.
We'll take both.
So you're recommending that the, the majority of the surplus be allocated to the roads reserve, which is in a positive balance, but our planning reserve and our parks' development reserves are in a deficit position. Why wouldn't we put that surplus and bring them into a positive position?
So through you, Mr. Chair, the, the planning and the park development are specific to the fee-supported areas. So those reserves are intended for that specific area, not to be funded through tax levy dollars. So that is the reason for the separation.
Any other questions from committee? I, I have one question because we, we worked, we worked very hard on the budget this, this last time around and looking at line by line. And I'm, I'm trying to better understand the item that is under information technology for the proposed allocation and, you know, the unaudited year-end balance of the 1.7. I felt like we, we deliberated heavily on the subscription-based items within, within the IT department. I felt like we, we went through staffing in regards to contracting it. And so I, your, your, your comment said it was for modernization and growth and continuing to invest in that. Could I, could I get more clarity on the thinking and for the direction of the 200,000 when we're already at the 1.7?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I will start and then I'll pass it over to General Manager Gandhi. So some of our IT initiatives and the modernization initiatives do require a bit of a capital investment upfront. We want to make sure that those programs are well underway and established before we add permanent staffing members or ongoing subscription fees. So there is an investment in order to modernize software, in order to get those software programs up and running, to make that initial capital investment before we would move that over to the operating program to have that sustainable year over year. So that would be my initial comments. Perhaps General Manager Gandhi has additional.
Thank you and through you, uh, Mr. Chair. So following up on what Director Adema had, had mentioned, there's a couple of things. Number one, we're actually going to be putting forward an IT strategy that speaks more broadly and more deliberately about what we're planning on doing with our IT work going forward. And so certainly the funding would be used in towards that. You'll have noted that there has been a line for many, many years called modernization. I'd like to add some precision to that going forward. So there's not just this broad sense of modernization. I think for as long as I've been in public service, which is more decades than I can count, I've heard that word. So we're going to be really focusing on, on specifically what it is that we're going to be doing. I couldn't agree more. I think we actually need to have a little bit more stability in the IT department in, in terms of having permanent resources there. We had a recent cyber breach, which will speak to the fact that we actually have to have full hands on deck at all times. And so for that reason, we are continuing to put additional funds into the IT reserve because we anticipate that we're going to be needing those to become even more secure in our environment and that we can dedicate the funds to the, the support tools that we need to operate. I'm, I'm hoping that in the coming year, we're going to be able to even be more precise about how those funds are being used in accordance with the IT strategy that we're bringing forward.
Wonderful, and I think, thank you. Like that was essentially the, the point that I was trying to get to was park structures is very clear, library assets is very clear, roads clear. But when we talk about growth or modernization, without that plan buttressing what that line, I mean, item is, that's why I was looking for the clarity. So I appreciate that and I look forward to seeing that come forward. So thank you, Ms. Gandhi. Councilor Leahy.
Thank you very much through you, Mr. Chair. I have several questions I'd like to follow up on. And one is the water financial plan that you referred to. I understand that we have an overall assets report that's coming forward in, in July of this year. And so I'm really looking forward to that because a point of concern for me is the infrastructure, maintaining it in the future, moving forward and having sufficient funds to do so. So my, I looked at the water financial plan from 2022 because as you said, we don't have the next one until later this year. But in that water financial plan, I would like to have an understanding if the amount that's being currently allocated is considered sufficient. According to the water financial plan done by the, the consultant, there may be some question as to whether we need to increase that. And so I wanted to discuss that here today.
Thanks, Councilor Leahy. So just for clarity, you're wondering if you're increasing the water rates? Is that what you're saying?
No, not the water rates, the infrastructure for the water, water, future water, water and wastewater infrastructure. If the plan that we currently have for that infrastructure is considered sufficient with regard to the potential future investment or whether we need to look at increasing that. Because I'm looking at the water financial plan from 2022 and we don't have the water financial plan from 2025 yet.
Understood, and you're wondering if that, there should be an increase there? So, Mr. Marshall.
So through you, Mr. Chair. So I believe the water financial plan estimated a required contribution to asset management reserves of $4 million a year for the next 10 years. Our budgeted contributions right now are about $2.5 million a year. So we're short on what we've budgeted. So the contribution from our surplus that we have shown for 2024 would bring us close to that $4 million mark that we need to contribute each year.
Thank you very much. So we'll, we'll be getting close, but we're not, we're still not meeting the 2022 recommended level of investment in water infrastructure. Is that correct? Okay, thank you very much for that. The other question I have is with regard to the funding available for operations of the Health and Active Living Plaza, which is going to be opening this fall to the public and we're, we're all looking forward to that very much. But we have practical questions with regard to how we're going to pay for the operations of that new Health and Active Living Plaza, which includes the library. And so in preparation for this meeting, I was looking at, to confirm the, the amounts of what the operating cost estimate is for next year and moving forward. And in the documents from October 6th.
Councilor Leahy, I don't, I don't want to be disrespectful or root or cut you off, but if somebody was to make a point of order, I would have to rule against that given the fact that like the, the help operating is not actually sitting here on this topic today. Like help was sitting there with regards to the capital expenditures.
Well, with regard to the overall surplus and where we're allocating our reserves, my point, thank you very much for giving me an opportunity to, to explain the point that I am wanting to arrive at, is that I wanted to confirm with our Finance Department to keep the big picture in place, because it will be opening this fall, that the estimated Health and Active Living Plaza operating costs as of October 2024 are estimated to be $1.5 million and that the amount of funding that that requires in the future is potentially a plus or minus 0.6. So it would be $1 million, so it would be $600,000, give or take. So in the, understanding the big picture and when we're making decisions about where we're allocating surplus, I am looking ahead to what are the potential operating costs and future expenses that we need to be taking into consideration.
Understood. I, so not sure if there is a question because.
Yeah, my question is, is there sufficient funds for operating the Health and Active Living Plaza in our, in our current reserves?
So without having staff respond, the, the operating budget for the last few years has addressed that. And so typically what we're talking about on the surpluses, on the operating surpluses, where it would be directed against the reserve line in that. I'm happy to obviously have staff respond to that, but that was my own two cents from chairing the committee. Mr. Belichick.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'll just answer this rather than put this to the treasure. Just for clarification, we would not fund operating costs from the reserves. What we've done is we've carved out, over the last several years, tax room, which right now in the interim is being used to fund asset management reserves. That tax levy that's being collected every year will simply be re-profiled when the help is opened and will be used to operate the help without creating a significant new tax burden for taxpayers. But I want it to be clear, we do not take one-time money that's sitting in reserves and use that to, to pay for perpetual ongoing costs because those reserves would be, become depleted very quickly and we'd have no money to operate the help. So I think that's really important that we don't get these concepts confused between what reserves are used for and what our ongoing sustainable revenues are used for.
Thanks, Mr. Belichick. And so Councilor Leahy, you had your third and final question before we go to the rest of.
Yes, my final question, yes, thank you very much. I appreciate that clarification. So I just wanted to confirm for residents who, who look at this and look at the surplus and they, they ask me these questions, I've already had them before the meeting today, why their tax, you know, property taxes continue to go up. So it's, it's good to confirm that the tax levy will, will not significantly increase in order to, to address the operating costs for the Health and Active Living Plaza in the future. That's what you've just stated. So I appreciate that clarification. So my last question is with regard to the park replacement because parks are extremely expensive to replace. I don't think most residents realize how many parks we have. We are very fortunate to have 50 parks and I believe there are more in the works. But looking to the future on the costs of replacing those parks, the, the presenter, Ms. Adema, mentioned at the beginning, you were advising that we allocate approximately over $200,000 additionally because there are a few parks that are within the next few years needing replacements. So if the replacement cost for park equipment in, on King Street came to over $500,000, I'm just curious about whether or not we should be prioritizing even further the parks that we are investing in because we, we create those parks using DCs, which doesn't cost the taxpayer any money. But in order to maintain and replace the equipment, and if we have 50 parks, we are looking at a very large bill to, in the future, to replace those, that park equipment. So my question is with regard to sufficient allocation of, of funds from the surplus to meet those needs in the future.
Thanks. I'm, I'm personally satisfied. Like when we started this council term, we weren't directly funding that, that line and now there is a revenue source going directly to that line. And then further subsequently, we have addressed it with surplus in previous years. And I'm realizing, as I chair the department, I'm intimate knowledge, but I'm realizing Mr. Marshall maybe should have been answering the question, but he was nodding, so there we go. So I, I know that I personally am satisfied and my congratulations to Mr. Marshall for the work in the department on what they've done with this. Is there any other questions or comments from committee? Counselor Carruthers said she, that she would be happy to move. We don't need a second or sitting in committee. All those in favor? Motion carries with thanks to the Finance Department. Counselor Carruthers.
Yes, I brought up the need for a follow-up motion on the water usage. And so I'd like to introduce that at this time. That council requests staff to report back detailing the increase in water usage over, over recent years, along with recommendations on how the town can assist residents in reducing water consumption to benefit both the environment and their finances.
Any discretion surrounding that? So Counselor Carruthers has a motion. I'm understanding that she shared the text with the clerk. Is that correct? If the clerk could put that on the screen. So we have the motion from Counselor Carruthers. Does anybody want a moment to pause and reread it after she has eloquently stated it? That's the moment. All those in favor? Motion carries. Wonderful. If, anything else from the committee for Mr. Marshall? Mr. Marshall, do you have any other items?
Through you, Mr. Chair, and at this time.
Great, thank you. So with that, I will turn it back to Madam Chair, Mayor Haxson.
Thank you very much. We still have a number of items remaining on today's agenda and I noticed that we're at the two-hour mark or just about to it. Perhaps we can take a short break, 30 minutes, and resume the ballots of our agenda following a break. Yes, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I believe that we have some external guests in the audience who, if I'm not mistaken, I might be presuming, but I believe they were here for item I-1. And I don't know if, if committee might entertain us dealing with that item and then recessing?
Thank you for noticing that. I saw, I saw them here, but I wasn't sure really what they were hanging around for. So we do know, so let's, let's make that happen before we break for lunch. Staff, if we can. So we're at I-1, Legal and Legislative Services with myself in the chair, and I'd like to pass to General Manager and. And I'd like to pass to General Manager and Councilor Ingraham to provide an overview of the report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and through you. It gives me great pleasure to summarize my approach today with respect to the report that is before you. But I, as usual, have some preliminary or preparatory remarks that will influence my approach today to this report. So, the first thing I want, counsel and the persons listening to these remarks, and in particular, the members of committees and groups of East Willenberry that have volunteered their time, their resources, their energy, their passion to volunteer on our committees and groups. These comments are directed as well, not only to my counsel, but also to these volunteers. One of the takeaways that I wish everyone to take away from these comments is that through the review process, which I have been a part of, and I'm proud to be a part of this review process, where we look at the governance of our committees going forward and whether or not we can do things better, we can change with certain impacts that may require us to change. But one of the takeaways is that, without a doubt, the consensus expressed throughout the reviews and reviews that have taken place basically for the last couple of years, the consensus among everybody involved is the importance, the critical importance, that volunteers and our volunteer community has played in getting this corporation, the town of East Willenberry, to the place it is today. Its success and its place in this respect is largely due to the, just the contribution and the expertise that these volunteers have given graciously of their time to this town. As a consequence, it's very important that your takeaway is that the relationship that we've enjoyed with these volunteers is something that is not, in anybody's mind at this time, looking like it's coming to any kind of a conclusion. In fact, it's simply an exercise that we're conducting, which will investigate how we best engage our volunteers in a meaningful and effective and efficient way to help them, help us navigate future. Because our success in the future is dependent, like our success in getting here, on the contribution that these volunteers have made to us. That's one takeaway. The second thing that I wanted everybody to understand, and this will be relevant to how I frame the report for you today, this has been an iterative process. It's a journey. It doesn't stop today. Perhaps when I stood before you about a year ago in May of 2024, with my report in hand, which doesn't look like the report in front of you, my expectation and my hope at that time was that I could provide some clarity and guidance as to the path forward with respect to governance matters of committees and how we can continue to do things effectively and efficiently here at the town. Unfortunately, on that date, it was very apparent the council graciously received my, what I thought was a well-thought-out report. They received it, and then it was tabled. It was tabled, and the process that occurred subsequently involved another review, which involved Corporate Services, Mita Gandhi, Kitty Bavington, who's sitting in the audience. And they led the next leg of the journey, so this is a journey, to review and understand and try to chart a path forward in a very complex and iterative process. So, that review was concluded. And here I am, back today, with my pen in hand, with the report in front of you. And yet, having received feedback, both through the process, having received feedback up until yesterday, and having thought about it again, I realize that we're not just quite there yet. And my report, as drafted, which is a compilation of all of the input that's been provided, feedback that has been so valuable, feedback provided by people that sit on the committees, and I see some in the audience today, all members of council, important feedback from the subcommittee of council that was created with Counselors Crone, Counselors Roy D. Clemente, and Counselors Carruthers. Important feedback that was provided to me by various staff members, including people who held positions of staff liaisons at those committees. So, even though I hold the pen and I stand here, well, sit here, sorry, before you today, it isn't just my report, and it wasn't just my recommendations that I crafted with my intent to help, again, guide us in this difficult decision, in this complex matter, to make a decision with respect to governance. So, with full admission, my approach today, as I prepared for this today or last night, is to change my approach somewhat to reflect some of the things I've learned along the way, and I continue to learn. I apologize to keep saying I'm learning, but unfortunately, I am still learning. And this has been a complex file. This has not been a simple file. But when something is as important to this council, which is how do we continue to nourish, to future our relationship, which is key to our success with our volunteers, a matter of this significance and importance to them is a matter of that significance and importance to me. I take it very seriously. And sometimes I get things wrong, but I am committed to always receiving feedback, positive and negative, and getting it right eventually. So, with that in mind, I'd like to describe to council, basically, the next 10 minutes, if I can contain it to that, will, basically, I'm going to approach it this way. I'm going to give you some sense of, let me get my papers here, sorry. I'm going to give you some sense of my approach to today. I am looking for something that's not necessarily quite correct in the recommendation. So, I'd ask for your indulgence to let me explain the overview of how we got here and some of my explanations. And perhaps at the end of those comments, I can suggest why I need to perhaps step back a bit from some of the recommendations and why I think that makes sense to table that for you today. So, the presentation begins now. And thank you for indulging me in those introductory remarks. I've already provided you with the who of who provided input into the report and this process, which has been ongoing for a couple of years now, and the importance of feedback. I'd like to reiterate that going forward in the strategy that's discussed in the body of the report, which I will go into in a little bit more detail than this. The strategy going forward is really to keep the level of communication and the level of input and feedback from volunteers involved and upfront in this process. It's not a process that will exclude volunteers. It will continue, just like talking to other people that were involved in the process to this date. Okay, now I'm going to address the why are we here? And if you pardon me, I am short of water, but I'm going to just take a little bit of a drink here. So, to give you an idea of why we're here today, why we continue on this journey together, there have been a number of reasons what brought us to look at the operations and governance of committees and groups. But I'm not going to go into the details. I will give you just some high-level explanation as really what sort of, what gave rise to us talking to you today? Well, I noted down in my prep work that there is some alignment of council's request to review the 20 committees and groups that we currently have in the town. Along, there's a line with, you know, council's strategic priority of continuous improvement. There's an alignment with another priority, which is the event strategy, which, when I first picked up the pen initially on the initial draft of this second report, I was expecting and hoping that this would align quite nicely with the presentation that Mr. Carmazin, GM Carmazin, will be bringing forward this year with respect to the event strategy, which is another part of this puzzle. So, it's part of this comprehensive puzzle, which could impact and does impact sort of the council's decision-making process with respect to governance. There have been legislative changes that have not been insignificant, which has been on our radar as far as volunteers who, like I said, graciously have given their time and their blood and their energy and everything to help us. And then, legislation at the provincial level has added a layer of administrative, administration, so to speak, if we can characterize like that, upon volunteers. To be, just to drill down to a level that I'm talking about, these committees, the volunteers that sit on these committees typically did not sign up to, you know, be responsible for, you know, minutes, agendas, sending them out, publicizing meetings, that kind of thing, that would typically, would be in the domain of someone who became a municipal or deputy clerk in that field. The volunteers did not necessarily sign up for that. So, those legislative changes that have impacted the volunteers, that's been high on our radar to see if we can address them while still maintaining our relationships with the volunteers. The timing of this reporting is very appropriate. This corporation has grown by leaps and bounds. Counselor Leahy earlier mentioned the growth projections for the town of East Willenberry, which are astonishingly large. They're, quite frankly, with a, you know, a rurally-based, small community that this East Willenberry was historically. To see those numbers are, you know, are pretty jaw-dropping. So, timing is everything in life. And I believe this review has hit that timing appropriately to have a look at it. There have been leadership changes. There has been new members of council in this term of council. If people go back, as I flip the page, there was a review done on these matters in 2019. But a lot has changed in 2019. So, this is timely in terms of, we should look at this again. And council was bang-on when they decided to instruct us to do so. What are the key themes that I found coming out of the review? The dedication of the volunteer community has played that enormous success in EG's success to date and will in the future. The legislation framework, as I just mentioned, is somewhat burdensome and is problematic. And perhaps we can do better with that. I said EG has grown. It certainly has. But as we've grown, so has our staff. Some of the things that we relied on, the volunteers to help us with, to assist us with, to basically run for us. As we've grown, our organization, as all organizations do, has grown as well. And some internal resources have been added over the years that will and can and have, to some degree, assumed responsibilities that this town would have relied wholly on volunteers in the past. Mr. Valcheck, our CAO is always looking for continuous improvement. How can we do things better? How can we do things more efficiently? Well, this is an exercise in that. And we're hoping, despite me being in the way sometimes, we're hoping that we, together, with me receiving the feedback wholly and comprehensively, and us together navigating the path forward, that we will get there to make this a very positive experience for everybody involved with a great outcome and meet Mr. Valcheck's expectation of continuous improvement. Other themes, and I'm not going to get into the details. The themes about there are opportunities to do better. There is a way we might consider in the future ways of engaging with our volunteers that we never were, it wasn't that environment back when. Engagement with the public, engagement thus with volunteers from the public, engagement with other organizations. It has changed materially since COVID. It has changed materially because of technological advances. So, can we harness some of that? But one thing that must emerge from the themes that were discussed and were derived from all of these conversations, all of these inputs, which, like I said, I greatly appreciate all the input. We need to pay attention to all the comments. We need to pay attention to these changes. We need to move forward in a way that builds on what we have now, but allows us to be perhaps a little bit more flexible, open-minded. One size will not fit all for any group or group of groups. I'll give you an example. We have a number of advisory committees, or so they're named. There are named advisory committees. One size will not fit all for each of those advisory committees. Therein lies my attempt, that has missed the mark again, to help guide this council in the journey forward in terms of, let's look at those advisory committees. You cannot look at them as a consolidated group. And in so doing, in writing some of the recommendations, I think it appears as if I did. I think it appears as if I did. That was not my intent. The exercise that we will go forward with, which is in the strategy to the report, which I'll very, just eventually quickly get there in a moment. That strategy does not look at advisory committees as one aggregate group of entities. It looks, it will be looking individually at each of them and finding out what is the best approach for them. Because there's so many ways to do this, and this is why this has become very complex. This is something that I wasn't aware of a year ago when I embarked on the journey with you. I didn't realize there were so many options available to this council to consider and to discuss, not at a superficial level, but obviously at a very comprehensive level. There's so many variables, there's so many options, that I couldn't possibly have captured it in a report today. And you're getting that sense. I hope you're getting that sense. Thank you for letting me go on this long. I will not like to tell you what the strategy is before I make my way in a few moments back to what I would hope to ask for you to do today. And it will not be, obviously, all of the recommendations that are in front of you in the report. So the strategy going forward is the outcome of all of these discussions. And the strategy in itself is not definitive in any respect because the variances among the different expressions of views, the viewpoints expressed by the various participants, they were not, they were not just one view. It was a compilation of a lot of views, a lot of different options, a lot of what if we did this, what if we did that? And thus, it wasn't possible to actually get to the point that I really thought perhaps the review would take us to, to make some solid recommendations about how to proceed. So thus, the strategy isn't one where I can present a definitive answer for anybody today. What I will tell you is the strategy is based upon a phased approach to implementing any changes in governments. A phased, that phased approach will give us ample time to ensure that we don't jump to the conclusion before we get the proper information before this council, and everybody has the time to reflect and move it forward into implementation. So the strategy is a phased approach. It's also an evolving approach. So when I said that this has been a very complex matter for me, grappling as a lawyer, and perhaps it's been, it's been very difficult, but at the same time, I've learned so much and it's been very rewarding. So I'm pleased and I'm grateful for being allowed to continue on the journey with you. But it's been very comprehensive, and because of the nature of it, it cannot be determined very quickly. It has to be in evolution. So the strategy is based upon those fundamental things where we're going to evolve. The strategy and the work that will come out of this process will evolve. First, we hope, with a go-forward path with respect to how we do this. But next, as to, once we have the path and we agree, okay, this will be what we do for this particular community or committee, and this will be something we do for a working group or community group. And then when we have that done, out of that should come a policy framework, which the town has considered in the past, but we've never really gotten to the point. And I guess we were finding out why, because it's a very difficult, it's very difficult moving targets and all that thing. But we will come out with a policy framework, which will guide this council and volunteers and staff as to what their roles and responsibilities are moving forward. One of the things that we were cognizant of when we did the review is that there is a lot of confusion as to what people do in terms of what their role is. You know, what is the role of council liaisons? What's the role of a staff liaison? And sometimes, what's the role of the committee? What's the role of the group? So those things will be defined out of this next leg of the journey together. And once that policy framework is determined and a policy is drafted, we can move forward without these issues that have popped up. So getting back to just the essence of the rest of the, the elements of the proposed strategy that's within the report at page five, some elements, I've talked about this. So, but I have some amendments, because again, like when I prepared this report, I had some idea in mind to propose council, to help with a roadmap in front of them, to help them make these important decisions, because there were so many variables. So the first one, I'm going to read it out. Phasing a restructuring of the current model for advisory committees to an alternative engagement model. So what that means is, like I said, we're phasing it. We're looking at alternative engagement models. But I want to clarify based on my previous comments. We are going to look at it on an individual basis by advisory committees. It's not one fits size all. It will fit all. Number two, we're phasing an evolving governance for community groups. When we looked at the community groups and the advisory groups, that theme of volunteers are subjected to this legislative framework. I've described about the taking minutes and such. But there's a bigger framework that volunteers are subjected to. And that may not have been known to volunteers when they stepped forward and put their hand up and said, I will help you. I will give you my, my work and my contribution, and I will willingly give that to you. And we received it appreciatively. And, but the bigger picture for volunteers, and this is what has concerned me, concerned others, is that volunteers are subject to things like our council has to do every single council meeting. They have to consider if there's any declarations of interest. They have to understand the rules of procedure because of procedural fairness that pertains to municipal governments. And those kind of things that they have to learn, they have to be aware of, they take time to learn. They take a lot of time to learn. Sometimes they're disciplines in themselves. And subjecting volunteers to that level of expectation, I, it's not, it's not been viewed in this organization. It's not been viewed by me as the town solicitor of this organization. That's, that's a fair burden to place on our volunteers. That pertains to the community groups as well. All the volunteers that sit on community groups, that pertains to them too, and the statutory committee volunteers. So it doesn't miss anybody. Everybody who volunteers is subject to those things. The other element of the strategy that came out in these exercises and the reviews that were conducted is that there was a need for training of not only members of all these committees and groups. There was a need to train staff. There was a need to train our council. Training was mentioned almost every single discussion. How could we improve? Training came up. Unfortunately, because of internal constraints, internal constraints and the growth of this organization, we just haven't had enough time to devote to this important matter, and we need to. The next factor in the strategy relates to what I said earlier, which is the event strategy that Mr. Carmison is working on, and we'll be delivering that report sometime this quarter or soon. The delivery of events under the event strategy has impacts for what committees or groups going forward might do. So we have to take that in mind. You can't just say, we hope for the best, we hope it aligns. We can't. We have to wait until the event strategy is more well-known and approved by this council. When I wrote this report, one of the points that was pointed out to me, and I apologize for this. I wrote the report at the time that I thought the event strategy would be coming forward at the same time, but that has not come to pass. Number five, there are groups perhaps that have run their course, and perhaps there won't be any further discussion necessary in terms of whether those groups and their mandates have been concluded. And finally, as I said before, we're going to establish a policy framework. So to bring me back to my final comment, and I'm sorry I went over the time. My final comment is this. I would like to ask your indulgence to receive this report today. I will be happy with that. I have a second request. The second request is because of the reasons I've given you and that our journey must continue, I would like you to perhaps consider endorsing the strategy as reported in the report, not in the recommendations. Because the report is where the strategy is discussed. I'd like you to consider endorsing a working group moving forward to undertake the next leg of this journey, which is to drill down now to examine all the various ways things can be done, all of the various methodologies. If you, if I refer you to recommendation two, it'll sum it up for me quite nicely, as I tried to do then, but like I said, writing from a different perspective. I'd like to have your acceptance and your endorsement of moving forward to examine various alternative engagement models. I've listed a few there, because there's all kinds of them, like staff, working groups, focus groups, sounding boards. But it doesn't matter what they're called. It's really about how to engage with staff and the various options that are available to you. I'd like your support and endorsement for a group to be assembled at the town to, and I don't know who's on that group, but a group of staff to move forward to examine all those options and to come back and discuss them with you without being definitive, because it's not our decision, it's your decision. And my effort to be too definitive has gotten me, landed me here again, telling you that we need to, I need to listen, and I have. And thus, I'm changing the approach today. So I want to do that. And I want to assure you that this works because it's not easy and because there's so many people to consult with and involve. We can't just come back with the next report. And I will never promise to bring you back a report until I think I've hit the mark next time, which is, will satisfy you that you have all the information that you can to make a decision about each and every one of these groups and not bundle them together. That wasn't my intention. In writing the report, I was hoping we could have more definition, but that hasn't been the case. Finally, so I'd like, basically, that you consider just those two recommendations, that you receive this report, I'm happy to answer any questions, and that you consider some kind of support for moving forward with the group so we can do that next leg of the journey and come back to you one or more times that is necessary to get us to the closing. And that work will continue during this term of council, and it'll probably not be done much earlier than before this end of council. So those are all my submissions, and I'm grateful for you listening to them all.
Thank you very much. This was so important to all of us and to our community. And the amount of time that you have spent and put your heart and soul into it, we can tell from how you delivered today. So thank you very much. I think everybody has a lot more answers in front of them, but we also have probably a lot more questions. And the future is good and strong for East Willenberry when we have something like this that we can work with. So thank you very much. I have Councillor Crothers, then I have Councillor Leahy. Go ahead, Councillor Crothers, please.
Thank you very much. And Madam Mayor, what I'm understanding from Ms. Ingram is that we are looking to receive this and endorse in principle so that staff can move forward with putting some meat on the bone. So I'm happy to move receipt and endorsement in principle. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor, hey, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much. That was going to be my approach. I'm happy to move this. I wanted to make a couple of general observations, though, and I want to thank our town solicitor as well for all of the work that has gone into this. And I think that we don't want perfection to get in the way of productivity and progress and moving forward in a way that is needed, and that it's been overdue for a long time to be updated. And I think that it will clarify in the future with regard to, as you mentioned, roles and responsibilities of not only council liaisons and staff members, but also those of the volunteer. And that's a two-way street. I think that I'm looking forward to so much in the future with better volunteer retention as well, because I think if we are educating and training not only the volunteers, but the staff throughout this whole process, that the outcomes will be, continue to be positive for the town, but also we can in the future avoid any miscommunications or misunderstandings. So I think everything coming out of your report is positive. It's moving in the right direction. I look forward to future meetings and discussions about it. And I am happy to support this moving forward for the benefit of the town of East Willenberry and the volunteers whom we look to participate and engage in a meaningful way in our town process. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Others who would like to speak at this time? I'm not seeing anyone at this time. Madam Clerk?
Three months later, I believe there was a motion that Councillor Crothers had presented to endorse in principle. to endorse in principle the proposed strategy of evolving, of an evolving model of governance for advisory committees and working groups as outlined in the report. Perhaps I can put that on the screen to confirm if that is in fact what council is considering at this point.
Thank you.
So through you, Madam Clerk and Madam Mayor. So are we not voting on all of the recommendations here that they continue on an interim basis through the? We're considering it all, correct? It's a very lengthy.
Three, Madam Mayor. Yes, go ahead, please.
Listening to Ms. Ingram's report, she has asked that we receive it and endorse it in principle. And she went through and talked about how we need to put more meat on the bones of each of these recommendations. So she's asking for us to receive and endorse in principle and not put all the recommendations forward quite yet. And she had said that she would come back to us.
Go ahead, please.
Through you, Madam Mayor. All of the recommendations here, there is, I don't see that there's anything, they're very general, that we would be opposed to. It talks about how they're going to move forward on an interim basis and until a policy framework can be developed and put more meat on the bones, that we consider all of the recommendations in terms of the establishing a working group. And so I think all of the recommendations that are here are relevant to be voted on.
Ingram.
Thank you, Counselor Lahey, for the question. And I understand where you're coming from. The reason why I suggest that we disregard at this point the recommendations, these other recommendations, is because some of them was my effort before I reflected and before I prepared last evening to sort of structure an interim situation. But the interim situation was based upon a governance framework being determinable today. As my comments have said, it's not determinable today because of the comments. Thus, there's no, it would just be confusing to sort of try to scope out an interim state in a recommendation was based upon another conclusion. So thus, those recommendations will not further, or will not, without, if you just not go with those recommendations, it won't detract from the work that will be done during the next phase. So the interim state doesn't have to be stated. Thus, it's really not, it's not going to change things. So I think that we should just stick with the strategy, and then out of the strategy will come what happens next. So without those recommendations, the status quo for everybody just continues. I'll tell you that the sense that I received from some of the feedback was that it looked like we were changing things. And that's not, it wasn't my intention to do that unless it was obvious that something would be changed. So this gives people the impression that we're changing things, but we're not. We're going to do this work. And then when council decides how things are going to change after the work is done, then we'll change. So the interim doesn't need to be stated because it's just going to be the status quo.
Is this regarding what we've just discussed? I have someone else that also wants to speak.
Through you, Madam Mayor. The town solicitor was answering my question, but I have a follow-up question. Because if that's the case, then I'm extremely disappointed. My first interview with the town solicitor and town clerk took place over two years ago with regard to this topic. And I am not comfortable continuing with the status quo. And I was looking forward to accepting these recommendations because they were showing so much improvement to the process to not only the current volunteers, but the current council liaison positions. So I am not in support of moving this because at the last moment, you have done your work. And these are the results that we see here in these recommendations, which are wonderful recommendations that will lead to positive outcomes in the future moving forward. And it was my impression from your report that this would be happening before the end of this term so that in 2026, we would have some, we will have made some serious progress before the end of this term of council. So I am not supportive of accepting it if you are going to remove the other recommendations that have been put in this because I have waited for two years and I have asked multiple questions. And oftentimes, those questions take place in closed session. And our length of our closed sessions get longer and longer because we are addressing matters that effectively affect volunteers sometimes in some cases, and our committees in some cases, whether we're accepting applications or people are resigning from those committees. So I'm not prepared to. This is great work that you have done, and I don't understand why at the last moment you would remove the recommendations that are very positive and would have benefited. I am not comfortable with continuing with the status quo after waiting for two years for the report.
Counselor Roy, do come in here, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. While I can appreciate that sentiment, even though it took several minutes to get there, my opinion about this is that by endorsing this in principle, we actually are accepting the meat and potatoes of the two pages of resolutions that were presented to us. And that's how I look at it. This is not status quo, but this is a dramatic change in not only how we engage with our volunteers and our committees, but also how we as counselors do our jobs. Because ultimately, when you're first elected, that's the first meeting you have with the mayor, is what committees are you interested in working on? And if those committees have a different level of engagement, that fundamentally changes the job of a counselor. And so that is not a decision to be taken lightly as well. So from my perspective, the work has been done, and absolutely we need change. And that's not what we're, we're not suggesting that we're not going to change anything. We're saying we are receiving the work that has been done. We're endorsing that work in the direction that we're taking, and we'd like to hear more. So it's not about adopting all of the nitty-gritty about what's happening and how that's going to look because it does create questions. That's why there were committee members in our audience today because they were worried about what the future looked like for their efforts. So from my perspective, we receive and endorse in principle. And it's taken us 45 minutes to get there, and I'd like to move forward, please.
Thank you. We have others who would also like to express. Go ahead, Counselor Crone, please.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, I agree with what's been said. And I think we, I'd like to call the question. I think we need to close this off.
Three, Madam Mayor. The motion's been moved by Counselor Crowthers. Counselor Crone has called a question, so you would just require the vote of committee.
At this point, we're in a vote. Are we aware of what the? Thank you. That council endorsed in principle the proposed strategy of an evolving model of governance for advisory committees and groups as outlined in the Legal and Legislative Services Report, LLS 2025-01. Go ahead, please.
One question is called, it's my understanding that anyone who hasn't spoken yet has an opportunity to speak. Is that correct? I believe Counselor Johns had his hand up.
It's okay, it's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, though.
I apologize, Counselor Johns. If you would like to take the time, now's the time if you would like to.
Thank you, and thank you. I, I would like to demonstrate deference to the effort that has been put forward, but in attempting to articulate some of the concerns that Counselor Lahey brought up, I can definitely, I don't know how to articulate it properly, but I can definitely echo the sentiments. And I appreciate the work that has been done by both the staff and leadership here from the staffing side and also the committee of the committees. But I don't know how to articulate it properly without, I don't know how to articulate it in a positive way to attempt to move forward. I'm going to be voting no on the motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? I'm not seeing any. We have in front of us the motion here moved by Counselor Crowthers. All those in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. I've been asked about a recess. And I, unless there's some objection at this point, we would, I would call a recess for, do you think the timing might be appropriate? Yes, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I'm just mindful of 2:00 PM start to your council meeting. So perhaps if you would like to entertain a shorter lunch break, that would be sufficient, hopefully, to carry forward with the balance of your committee agenda. There are still a number of items left.
Yeah, yes. Thirty-minute recess, does that work for everyone? I think we've time to stretch and get a little walk along the way. So we would be back in half an hour then. Thank you.
We will now resume the balance of today's committee meeting. Madam Clerk, please note that Counselor Johns is absent with notice for this portion of the meeting. And with that, we will move to item J, which is Parks, Recreation, Culture, with Counselor Cronin in the chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item on our agenda today for Parks and Recreation and Culture. It is, item one is Parks, Recreation and Culture Report, PRC 2025-02, Facility Lease Agreements at 19040 Leslie Street and 1914B Mount Albert Road. Mr. Carmison, could you take us through this, please?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. The report prepared for council recommends two lease renewals. The first is for administrative space at 19040 Leslie Street for the EG Minor Soccer Club. The EG Minor Soccer Club is one of EG's largest affiliated sports groups and one of the fastest growing facility, or, excuse me, sports groups in town. The second lease proposed to council is a renewable lease for Pro Shop and Sporting Goods Services at the East Gullenberry Sports Complex. Staffs available to answer any questions council may have regarding the recommended lease renewals.
Before I open it to any questions, can I have a mover for this, please? Moved by Counselor Carruthers. And any questions, Counselor Leahy, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Through you, Mr. Chair. My question is with regard to any other occupants in that building, because I recall when we were discussing allowing the East Gullenberry Soccer Club to have their, to have their facility there, that, oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the wrong item. I'm sorry. I'll withdraw my comment. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, no, sorry. Back on again.
Okay. Back, back to you.
So, my comment is, are there any other staff members who are working in that building? Because it's my understanding that there, there could be some from economic development. And so I was wondering about the long-term leasing of it in the future, and if there is a need for any office space for staff that might be able to use this building, rather than the East Gullenberry Soccer Club.
Mr. Carmison?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The intent of the lease is a short-term lease. Initially, it was a two-year term. The renewal period, I believe, is a two-year term within the report. It's the intent of the East Gullenberry Soccer Club. Should the town build a lit artificial turf field and potential sports dome, their ideal location would be to be housed out of that, that facility. And recognizing that, that's why it's a limited duration, a two-year lease renewal that's being recommended to council.
Go ahead, Counselor Leahy.
So, just a follow-up question through you, Mr. Chair. So, are there staff members, though, who, who share that building with the East Gullenberry Soccer Club currently? And is there any need that we need to be addressing in terms of staffing and where their office space is?
Mr. Carmison?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The facility is shared with economic development. It's shared in a sense that there is separate office spaces, as well as itinerant meeting room space and kitchen space that's shared between the groups. The office spaces are, do have locking capabilities to be closed off from each other, so they can operate autonomously. As far as the long-term space needs plans, we've, we're waiting for the workforce resource planning study to be complete, and then we'll revisit our staffing requirements. There is capacity within the existing facility for some expansion of economic development beyond what is currently being hosted out of the facility. But that's our, our short-term space needs plans. Our medium to long-term would be subject to the workforce planning study that is being performed through people and belonging and corporate services.
Good. Thank you. Are there any other questions from committee? Counselor Roy DiClemente.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I was, I got in, it was in receipt of an email from the chair of our Economic Development Advisory Committee, who was advocating for some space for economic development to, and council will, committee will remember, there was, the YSpace programming that's being delivered by economic development is being done in Sutton. And there was certainly a, a desire to see some local programming being done in East Gullenberry. So, at this point, I'm, after we've dealt with this matter, I'm going to bring forward another resolution to kind of address that. But the reality is that we, I don't think that the soccer club wants to be in that space anymore than our staff want them in there, in that they would like a home closer to where soccer is played. And I think this is a temporary resolution. They're a wonderful, they've been a good tenant, they've delivered on all of the promises that they've done, they're a good partner with, with the town, they've adhered to all of the terms, both in-kind and financial with the town. And, you know, they've got 4,000 members, and they're continuing to grow. So, this is a good solution, I think, in the short term. And, and when the Health and Active Living Plaza opens, there may be other options for us to be able to shift people around. But until that, until that happens, I think we need to, we need to support the soccer club and, and have them where they are right now. So, thank you.
Good. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I'll ask all those in favor of the, the motion, all those in favor. None opposed, motion is carried. Mr. Carmison, do you have anything else left for, for committee?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Nothing further at this time.
Okay. And committee, Counselor Roy DiClemente?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just further to my comments a few seconds ago, I just wanted to table a resolution that staff be directed to examine short and long-term solutions in EG to host YSpace and other economic development programming and report back.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that? Okay. And we have that up on the screen. All those in favor? None opposed? It's carried. Any other questions from committee to Mr. Carmison? Seeing none, I hand it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. We're at L. Corporate Services with Counselor Carruthers in the chair.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I think we're on K.
Oh, I'm sorry. I've jumped, I think. It's item K, Engineering and Public Works with Counselor Leahy in the chair. Sorry.
That's okay. Thank you very much, through you, Madam Chair. And this is a very important report. It's the 2024 Annual Summary Report for the Town of East Gullenberry Regarding Drinking Water Systems. And can I have a mover for this, please? Thank you, Counselor Foster. And so I would like to ask the general manager, Mike Molinari, if he'd like to make any comments on the report before I open it up to questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. This is an annual report to advise council on the performance of our drinking water systems. We're pleased to advise that the town received an overall score of 100% by the, by the MECP for our major drinking water systems. This demonstrates that the town's drinking water is safe and is being well-managed in accordance with our drinking water quality management system, as also, as it is recognized by the, the MECP. So, in, just to provide a couple of numbers, in 2024, the town's water operators collected over 6,300 samples across the town. The vast majority being approximately 98 to 99% of the samples were, that were collected, were in compliance with the regulatory requirements. Just wanted to also let council know that in the report, we discuss non-revenue water. Staff continue to refine and look for ways to reduce non-revenue water. Currently, the largest opportunity to do this is through the joint water quality study that we have embarked on with the region. It's a very significant project. It's currently being awarded at the region, and we are looking forward to getting this work underway. So, happy to answer any questions.
Are there any members of committee with questions? Yes, Counselor Carruthers?
Thank you. I appreciate all that you and your team do to make sure that our, our water is, is drinkable and meets all safety standards. My question is, a number of residents continue to talk about the aesthetics of the water. And while I realize that's not part of this report, when we're talking about water quality, our residents would want to hear what we're doing to improve the aesthetics of the water. Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair. So, yeah, so the town is responsible for delivery of, of the water. The region is responsible for processing, disinfecting, and so forth. So, the, the aesthetic issues that you mentioned, those will be dealt with through a filtration exercise and project that will, will have to happen across a number of regional facilities at the town. So, in Mount Albert, we expect that design's underway now. We would expect that somewhere over the 2027 to 2029 period, those construction, that construction project would be completed, and that will, will address some of the aesthetic As far as in Sharon and Queensville, there's, there's a number of wells that would also need to have a similar capital project installed in order to filter, to filter that water before it's provided to the town by the region. And, and that also, there are two projects for that. The first project is, is in the near term, which is good news, 2025 to 2029. The second project is, is out a little bit. It's 2038 to 2043. But there's always potential for those to be advanced. So we're, we're just happy that there, that there's a couple in the near term. Let's get those in, and then we can work on the timing of the second two in the, in the Sharon and Queensville area.
Thank you very much. We need to continue to advocate for that. Thank you.
Any other questions from members of committee? If not, I have, I have a couple of follow-up points I'd like to ask the General Manager about. And it's with regard to a few more details on the aesthetic quality improvements that are coming. Because as noted by my fellow counselor, we are, we are ensured that the, that the safety of the water is there. And, but it always comes down to sometimes odor or color, the fact that in Mount Albert specifically, there is an iron mineral element to this. And so if you could just elaborate a little bit further, keeping in mind that it's the region's responsibility that, that they will be filtering the water in the future and hopefully improve the aesthetic quality of it. So just a few more details, if we could, about the, about the aesthetic improvements coming.
Through you, Madam Chair. Maybe I'll refer that to, to some staff that have joined me today that, that know this topic a little better than I.
Through you, Madam Chair. Sorry. Yeah, so these upgrades are going to happen at the York Regional Wells. Currently, some of the aesthetics are related to iron, which is not a health hazard, but an aesthetic issue. So you'll see it in your hot water if you have an accumulation in the bottom of your hot water tank, et cetera. But what they do currently is they use sodium silicate to sequester the iron as their treatment method, but they will be removing the iron with these upgrades. It's just going to take time, but we are looking forward to it, and we're working with them through that process.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, and I had one other further question with regard to our conversation this morning and surpluses and what's being put into the reserves for the water and wastewater system for the town. And if you could make any comments about, about that, about the amount being put in, about if there is any more reports or studies that we are waiting for or looking forward to with regard to water in the Town of East Gullenberry.
Through you, Madam Chair. Maybe I can refer that to our treasurer.
Through you, Madam Chair. As mentioned earlier, the water rate study that was done a few years ago recommended a certain rate that should be contributed to our reserves of about $4 million a year to make sure that our, our system was sustainable in the medium to longer term. Right now, we've budgeted $2.5 million. And so we're short in terms of what we've been contributing. That surplus of, I think it was about $1.6 million, when that gets contributed to the asset management reserves, that meets our $4 million target that we've been looking for over the past several years.
Thank you very much for that additional information and clarification. Thank you. So seeing no other questions, does General Manager Molinari, do you have any questions or, or, sorry, comments you'd like to make?
Thank you. Nothing further this time.
Seeing no further questions, I'd like to call it to a vote. It was moved by Counselor Foster. Everyone in favor? And that is carried. Thank you very much. I will pass it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. We are at item L, Services with Counselor Carruthers in the chair.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. We have one item, and it is a prestigious recognition. I'll turn this over to General Manager Gandhi to explain this. Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. We're pleased to, to present this memo with regards to Communications Branch being awarded the MARCOM award. The memo speaks to the specific activity, that being the communications survey. And the results of that were brought towards, to council last June. So you have those in your records in terms of the outreach and the extent to which that communication survey was, was released. I want to acknowledge, as they walk into council chambers, the leadership of Bethany Lee, who is the Director of Communications, and everyone who is sitting in the audience. This is an exceptional achievement. I also want to acknowledge Laura Hannah, who is on maternity leave, and Danielle Mazur, who is also on maternity leave, who were instrumental in bringing this to fruition. So thank you, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you. I understand this is the fourth MARCOM award.
Correct.
Congratulations. Congratulations to your team. If I can have someone move receipt of this, Counselor Crone, all in favor, and that's carried. Madam Mayor, would you like a picture with the award? Should we, we're almost at the end of the agenda, so I'm wondering if you want to just take us through the rest of the agenda, and if you can just wait, and we'll get a picture after? Does that make sense?
I think that would be wonderful.
Thank you.
We are at item M, Administration, with myself in the chair, and there is no, nothing at this time on that report. Item N is Fire and Emergency Services, with Counselor Foster in the chair.
We have nothing on the agenda, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I will move to other business, and I am not aware of any at this time. Counselor, go ahead, please.
Surprise! I'm wondering if I might, I'd like to waive our procedural bylaw in order to introduce an urgent matter that relates to the current tariff regime that, that we are seeing today. And I was going to, to introduce a motion regarding an announcement that Premier Ford made this morning regarding procurement policies and municipalities, and I wanted to direct staff to bring something forward for us. So that's, that's the intent of, of why I'd like to introduce a waiving of the procedural motion.
Happy to waive procedure.
I'm seeing an agreement. To vote on it. All in favor? That's carried. Go ahead.
So thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to, to address the matter that Premier Ford announced, that all US-based companies are banned from participating in Ontario procurement. And he has also requested that municipalities follow suit with his announcement. So I've crafted a resolution. The clerk has it, and it's basically those two whereas's, and that be it therefore resolved that the council of the Town of East Gullenberry direct staff to prepare a resolution for council's consideration to amend the town's procurement policies to respond in similar fashion to the current tariff regime in line with the province of Ontario's response, and that this resolution be adopted at the council meeting on March 4th. It was urgent because it's happening right now.
Counsel, Counsel Leahy, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much, through you, Madam Mayor. I'm fully supportive of, of the responses that are suggested. However, there may be, you know, with good intentions, there can also sometimes be unintended consequences. Would there be any potential impact that the staff needs to take into special consideration? For example, regarding any safety equipment or anything to do with our emergency and fire services department that might prevent staff from complying with that sort of a blanket statement? Yeah.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can, I can certainly respond, and I'm sure staff could as well, but my original intent had been to actually put forward a ban. And that we would create a, my thought had been that we would create a mechanism where staff could prepare a report where it was absolutely necessary to procure items from a US-based supplier. But I think the, the way I've drafted this is so that staff can prepare a resolution that would take those sorts of matters into consideration, where we may even be dealing with a contractor who's supplying wire from somewhere. We have a direct relationship with the contractor, but not necessarily with how they're sourcing the materials to do the job. So I want to leave it in staff's expert hands to, to allow us to respond in kind, but do so in the way that it still protects the municipality. Thank you for your consideration.
Other comments, questions? Counselor Leahy, go ahead, please.
Well, then I would suggest a friendly amendment so that that is in the, in the language there. So that if the towns, amend the town's procurement policies to respond in a similar fashion, and then add some appropriate language that gives you the leeway to, to protect the best interests of the employees and the town of municipal, and the municipality as a whole when it comes to any kind of safety issue or supply issue that has safety implications. So just something simple, but something that acknowledges that.
Thank you, Counselor Carruthers.
I think this encompasses that. Staff will come back with that, and this allows staff to take that type of wording and incorporate it into the response that they bring back to us. So I think, I think this is covered, and I'm happy to call the question on this one.
Thank you. All those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. We're now at item P on the adjournment, on the adjourn, on the agenda, and that is our adjournment. So be it resolved at the meeting, the committee poll adjourn at 1:49 PM. Have a mover, please. Counselor Carruthers, all those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much.